Welcome everyone.
Reporting in progress.
Welcome everyone to the Situate Planning Board meeting Thursday, January 27th, 2022, here in the Select Board Hearing Room. The general public is welcome to attend via Zoom. Public comment will be available. And Masses are strongly encouraged in-person participants. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I'm moved.
Is this second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have, the first item is notice of a public hearing, and one of our members has recused herself.
Say her name.
Rebecca Lewis has recused herself from this public hearing.
And she has left, and left the room.
She has left the room. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and with Situate zoning bylaw, Section 530 Accessory Dwelling Special Permit, and Section 940 Referrals, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, January 27th, 2022, in the Select Board's Hearing Room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant Mary Ann Lewis and owner AMMA Realty Trust, John M. McAuliffe, trustee for accessory dwelling special permit in a newly constructed detached garage at property located at 81 Norwell Avenue, Situate. Property as shown on a search map, block parcel 34-29-5. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass, during normal business hours. Butters and other interested parties are invited to attend this public hearing. Okay, the applicant would like to come forward, please?
Yes. Good evening.
If you would identify yourself, please, for the record.
Certainly. Mary Ann Lewis, applicant for the aforementioned. Thank you.
Your address is?
81 Norwell Ave., Situate, Massachusetts. And if I may, I believe you folks have a copy of the letter, but for purposes of the hearing, if I can read the letter, I think by way of introduction, that would be helpful.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Dear Planning Board members and attendees, thank you for taking the time to review my application for a detached accessory dwelling at 81 Norwell Ave., in Situate. Your public service is appreciated. I purchased the aforementioned property in November of 2018, when it was in a dilapidated state, physically unsafe, rodent infested, and frequently used by heroin addicts to inject. Since then, I have improved the lot and the neighborhood by erecting two new structures as permitted by the town's building department, see attached plan. On the site now is a house, primary dwelling, and a garage with suitable space above it for an accessory dwelling. Both structures comply with current zoning setbacks and are appropriately positioned to maximize off-street parking on a pervious surface, providing at least two spaces for the accessory dwelling occupants' use. The scale and design of the structures is proportionate to one another and is compatible and complementary to the surrounding area. In accordance with the bylaw, the livable space footage of the proposed accessory dwelling does not exceed 750 square feet of 40% of the primary footprint. The intended use would be for a local person who otherwise may be unable to afford to stay in town. With the current housing shortage across the Commonwealth and the rising cost in particular associated with the ZIP code, your approval of this application will help alleviate some of that demand in a manner that preserves the integrity of our community. Thank you for your consideration. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, Karen?
So Ms. Lewis did submit an application for accessory dwelling special permit in a detached garage. The building permit does indicate that the space above the second floor of the garage is unfinished space. That's what the building permit refers to. It appears to me the gross square footage is more than 750 square feet. So I think the area of the accessory dwelling may be a problem. I also, the building, I combed through the building department files again today, and there's no foundation as-built in there. So I would probably recommend to the Planning Board that they ask for an as-built, which will be, foundation as-built will be required for the, for an occupancy permit for the, both the primary dwelling and the garage, to verify that it meets the setbacks and the building height requirements.
Is there stormwater associated with this?
No.
No?
There's a, the driveway is pervious material, and I believe it was a stone driveway, as I took a picture and included it all in your meeting materials. I took the picture from the road. That's pervious material. So there's, there was no stormwater permit associated with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, comments from the board? I'll start with you, Bob.
So Karen, were saying that your assessment is that it's not, it goes over the 40% threshold of the accessory dwelling compared to the main structure? Because I, I read it a little bit differently with the, with the other emails, the email from the, from the guys who were doing the flooring, you know, for the net.
Right, but I mean, the, all the other accessory dwellings we go by are gross square feet, and I believe the dimensions on this are 30 by 28, in a little two-foot square area, and I calculated that as 870 square feet, and I believe the building commissioner has calculated that as 870 square feet as well.
Well, we're going off the net of their, of the primary dwelling.
It says total square footage. That's what it says. It says total square footage in the zoning bylaw.
I just have that question.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
So back to the square footage aspect. Right now, I see, you know, floor plan for the garage and then for the second floor plan. I'm kind of wondering what's happening above the second floor. I see that there's a top plate label. Is there a floor yet there? Are they vaulted ceilings? Or is there, is there a space up there? I also noticed that substitution was made from an architectural plan. Looks like there was a small, maybe double, very small double hung or casement style window. That's now two double hung windows on the front. Elevations, I'm just wondering what's happening, I guess, above the second floor? And if there's a stairwell up there? I don't see a stairwell in the floor plan, or how you access that space.
So that, some of those changes were based basically on material. So, you know, I ended up using two round windows on the house part, but it's unfinished in that peak area. There's nothing up there.
So there's, it's not even accessible? There's no, because I don't see a stairwell or anything?
Anything, it's all accessible from the, from the stairwell into the apartment, a proposed apartment, you know?
So there is an, there is an interior stairwell in this apartment?
Yes.
Can you tell us where it is?
I just, I don't see it on.
I don't see it anywhere.
Can you point it out?
Right here. I have one on the first floor, but not one on the second floor.
Right.
Just goes to the mechanic area.
Oh, okay, so that's actually a stairwell, that, there. I don't have any other questions.
Karen?
No, no, thank you.
Steve?
Well, I guess I'm looking at this thing, and it looks like it's already built out.
It is.
So I guess I'm asking the question, why are we building it out before we get a special permit for accessory dwelling?
So the outside of the building is built out. So when I applied, since I was tearing down the initial structure that was such sightly I saw, and the neighbors were very happy certainly to see that go, before I could apply for a, an accessory dwelling permit, I had to have a primary dwelling. So I could build out the perimeter, all compliant with the building department's, you know, setbacks and everything, but before I applied for a dwelling, an accessory dwelling, I needed a primary. So they don't allow you to apply for both simultaneously when you're tearing down a primary structure. That's why I kind of kept circling for a space with it.
Well, at this point, it's, because it's built out, we, we have limited sort of action we can take to mitigate the impact of this, this accessory dwelling. I mean, it looks like you've included balconies on the front and the back of the house?
Not on the back, on the front and the side.
And how does that impact the neighbors?
Well, the balcony on the front is probably, let's see, 60 feet off the, there's probably 60 feet of frontage between the balcony on the front and the street, which is double the amount of frontage that the primary dwelling even has between itself and the street.
I'm really thinking behind it.
Well, it complies with the current setbacks.
Yeah, for, for a garage.
Well, for any structure, really, but if you look at the lot, it's kind of L-shaped, and actually, the size of the lot, if you will, that the garage itself is on, is bigger than most lots in that neighborhood. Most lots are 5,000 square feet, and so that's about 7,500 square feet, the lot that the garage is on. So it's almost, what's that, 50% greater than most of the surrounding lots?
So what, what, I mean, with, with it exceeding the square footage, first of all, it just doesn't comply. So how, how do you propose to address that?
So I would suggest that it does actually comply if you, you know, there isn't sort of any spelled out set formula in terms of how you constitute the square footage.
We have, we have a pretty standard approach, so.
So I did have a.
I'm trusting Karen's calculation here.
Okay. I did have a conversation with, you know, the assessor in terms of what they count and, you know, what, and I had a conversation with Karen about, you know, sort of what they count, and I'd suggest that it does comply on either/or scenario. One is, when you build in with, you know, four-by-sixes, it, it caves in the, you know, the area, living area, and then the house itself, which is, assessor has it 1863, there's a mechanic room above that as well, that he doesn't count in his calculations, but if you're counting mechanic rooms and you add the 12 by 26, it comes to 2175, and 40% of that is 870.
Well, I'm not prepared to change the way we calculate, because we've done this 50 times already. So I'm trusting the numbers that Karen has come up with, and if we're using the calculations that we normally use with the primary dwelling, then I would say it's, you know, it's got to follow the same numbers. I don't want to set a new precedent here.
We have the assessor's cards, which we also sent you, the 2021 assessor's card, lists the garage as net area 870. It says, and the net area of the primary dwelling is 1863 square feet. That's what's on the, the assessor's cards.
And then if you, but if, there's another number also, if you look in the sheet, which is the, again, the 1863 does not contemplate the 12 by 26 mechanic room of the house.
Neither.
And if you do include that, that comes to 2175, and 40% of that is 870.
Where's this mechanics room?
In the house? I don't know if it was on the floor plan.
You can only go by what we've got here.
If you look on the left side of the house, how it peaks there, it's 12 by 26 right there.
On the primary dwelling, where is?
Yes. It's above the master bedroom in the study. It runs along that old left-hand side.
Well, that's attic space, though.
But again, when I spoke with the assessor, he said they count that towards, although it wasn't included, because they count mechanic room. So I was thinking, either you count the mechanic room, or you don't count the mechanic room, but if you, either way you do it, it complies.
Well, no, it doesn't. Whatever it was, 40% of 18 whatever is 745 square feet, and you're at 870.
But the, but the area isn't, you know, like I said, the, I sent the, along the email regarding the floor space inside the first floor of the garage, you keep losing a foot as you go up. So they just do it based on the outside of the foundation.
Yeah, that's how we, we gross, calculate gross square feet. That's how we do it.
But I'd suggest that, you know, the policy, which I think is a great policy for an accessory dwelling, you know, is to provide additional housing that might not otherwise be available. And in terms of the living space, that's how I would suggest.
Well, we can't sort of pick and choose. We've got all, all of our requirements we have to meet, not just one component of it. So. And what other mitigation have you done to, to minimize the impact on the neighbors?
I think I've done a lot of mitigation, by improving the property?
No, I mean.
Getting rid of heroin addicts that were injecting on the side.
I mean of the structure itself and its impact on your neighbors.
I've complied with all the setbacks. I put a pervious driveway in. I've had pretty good communication with most of my neighbors.
What kind of impact does it have in the backyard for your neighbors? Is there any visual screening?
There's a fence up.
Does it?
It's an older fence, but, you know, hopefully we can, as we bump along, we can get a newer looking fence. I mean, I'm a single homeowner. I'm not a big developer of anything. It complies with the setbacks and is complementary to the neighbor, the neighborhood.
Well, I think fundamentally, what's happened is you, you've built it, and then you have come in and asked us to approve it post-construction. That's fundamentally what's happened, and we don't normally do that. And, you know, if it was a pre-existing longstanding structure, then there's some provision in the, in the bylaw for that. This is new construction. It's, it's still under construction, from my view of it.
Mr. Pritchard, when I went in to apply for the building permit, it's kind of like a who's-on-first, because when you get your permit, they can't give you an accessory dwelling permit unless there's a primary in place. And since I was raising or demolishing the primary, they said you have to come back for the accessory dwelling permit once there's a primary. So there needs to be a primary to have an accessory, and so that's why I did it in that order. If, if I, if there was an existing primary, before I did anything with the garage, I would have come in, but I couldn't, so I built the structure of the garage, so I could house, you know, like, material and everything as I was bumping along. And, and then once I got the occupancy sign off for the house, then that allowed me to come in and fill out an application for the accessory dwelling permit.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't feel to me like you've waited for the approval of the accessory dwelling. It feels to me like you've built the whole thing and have come in and asked us to approve it as, as built.
Karen?
And it's oversized.
In layman's terms, I think that you're asking, if open witness is your commissioner. This is why it is not, it's not subsidiary to the main house. It looks, to me, it looks like there are two houses on Norwell Ave., which we do not allow in this district, so.
But if I may, again, that's chronology of events. I, you know, would have happily applied for everything in, at a simultaneous sequence, but that was the instruction that I received to, that I can't apply until the primary is finished. It's aesthetically, I think, very complementary to one another, and there's nothing that prohibited me from building the garage. I mean, I got, you know, a building permit to build that garage. It complies with all the setbacks, so it's not.
Right, you can leave it as a garage.
The outside structure of the garage would have never been different whether I applied for an accessory dwelling permit or not.
Yeah.
That's what I want to reassure the board.
Yeah, you can leave it as a garage. The problem is, you want to occupy it on the second floor. Right?
Well, so that's what we do whenever we authorize an accessory dwelling of an, of an existing structure, you know, this one is in, you know, it's very, like, it's very soon after it was built, it's still authorizing an accessory dwelling. And so Karen, as I, as I read it also, the, so we're, for purpose of this section, the computation of the maximum floor area, the, so the, the 40% or 750 square feet for the accessory dwelling is based off of the floor area of the primary dwelling.
That's correct. It's based on the floor area of the primary dwelling.
So we go floor area of the primary dwelling to the floor area of the accessory dwelling, right?
Right.
Not the footprint?
Right. We go floor area. No accessory dwelling shall exceed the maximum of either 750 square feet or 40% of the total square footage of the floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater.
No, in that, in that case, we have three different measurements of what the floor area is for the primary dwelling. It's 1896, 1863, and then.
Yeah, we have several different, we have several different ones. You are correct.
But I'm also willing to, to take on, on faith the consultant of the homeowner, who talked about the, how the walls come in about a foot, and then when you take out the utility area, you get down to below 750 square feet. So at least from my point of view, the, it fits within the bylaws as far as the percentage goes. I know, if we're going floor area, floor area, I look at this, I'm like, that fits. Again, my, my concern would be, just reading over some of the neighbors', the neighbors' concerns, while it's not the board's job to try to work out, you know, neighbors' issues, I think that some of the concerns were about privacy, going into the backyard because the structure is taller than what they had. I think, for me, this would be okay. We made some concessions to some of the concerns of the neighbors as far as the privacy goes and, you know, general appearance of the yard, but that's just what I wanted to say.
And what do you mean by concessions?
Oh, so a couple of the, a couple of the comments were talking about the, the height of the building and the porch on the second floor, kind of like seeing because of the standoff or the distance from the lot edge, the, you know, the balcony, you know, looking like in the backyard. Maybe installing like a, you know.
Trialers or something, yeah.
But I think as far as, you know, we go to, as far as the zoning bylaw goes, I think that it does fit in taking, you know, the consultant's measurements other against the floor space, because I don't think that this bylaw means, say, we need to look at the floor space of the primary dwelling and then compare it to the perimeter of the accessory dwelling, because that's not an applicable, because before area, before.
Karen? Comment?
I think I would ultimately suggest, I mean, after we have public input, that we probably continue the hearing and explore that avenue further, or ask the applicant how she can possibly correct the situation. No other project have we taken out mechanical areas. So I think that we have a lot of, we've received public comment.
Yes, we have.
And I, we have people here who probably want to comment as well.
And one of the things that I am concerned about, I have this thing about access and egress, and yes, there is a way out onto the porch and down the stairs, but there needs to be another stairwell. There needs to be another way out. And the problem here, I think, is we put the cart before the horse, and that is truly unfortunate, because often what we do with these accessory apartments, and please understand that they're generally approved in one night, we talk about lighting, we talk about fencing, we talk about shrubbery, we talk about all kinds of different things to go forward. But I'm looking at this plan, and other than the door that goes to the porch, where's the other access egress?
So there are three, if I may, there's a lot of commentary. I don't know how often, to your point, Karen, I don't know, because I'm not you folks and I don't hear all these things, how often an applicant may or may not be talking about including or not including mechanical space. So I don't know if that's routine or not, only you folks do. And I was thinking about it, the way Bob articulated it even better than I, so I appreciate that. In terms of the egresses, there are actually three egresses, and I, the house that I occupied before occupying 81 Norwell only has one set of stairs down, and that's on Lighthouse Road, and if you go around, all those only have one set of stairs.
We're not talking about those. This is a new bill. This is a new bill.
No, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm answering your questions, and maybe not in a concise manner, but, so there are three egresses. There are two sliding glass doors facing out to the front deck, and a single, I guess you call it a single door going into, on the top on the left. So there are three egresses, one set of stairs going up. The, the place that the set of, second set of stairs, if that was required, would make sense to do would be in the back, but that would probably further displease the neighbor in the back. But as far as the back is concerned, right now, there's no decking out there or, or anything else, and it's all, again, the structure itself complies with all the setbacks, and in terms of chronology, you know, I'm here now for that reason, but the, there's no side lighting or back lighting that would, the only outside lights that there are in the garage are on the front, and one little light on the left that is over the, the single door going in on the ground floor of the garage. So there are no sort of obstructionist lights or anything, you know, there's, there's no floodlights on all night long or anything else. The, the house itself has lighting around it, but the garage doesn't.
Where are the stairs that go to the attic?
Right where the, that, like, walked up with the mechanic room to the, in, in.
Those are stairs that go upstairs?
Yeah.
So that could be part of your square footage? I mean, you could.
It's, it's mechanic attic area, it's nothing, there's nothing up there.
Well, she's already over the limit.
Yeah, she is.
We can't make that usable space either.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no intention for that at all.
All right, I will open this up for public comment. All right, I will open this up for public comment. Sharon?
So, because we're remote, we have, we have remote and in-person. So if you are remote, if you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. Or if you're on Zoom, you can go to the bottom of your screen and raise your hand by participant, or you can put your camera on, and we'll try and find you, we'll find you and wave at us so that we can get your comments in. So we'll start with the room here.
Yes.
That's all right, and then people can get lined up for going into question, questions.
Do you want me to stand?
No, you stay right there. When I call upon you, please give me your name and address, please. All right, raise your hand if you want to make a comment. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Laura O'Malley, thirty-seven Edgar Road. I live around the corner from Derek's home and workhouse, and a lot of my neighbors are here. I have to say personally, I got the house before Maria took over, was an eyesore. It was our whole, part of our little area. I do like what she's done with the house, and I definitely think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
At the pension, forty-seven Edgar Road. I agree with everything about the house, but the garage is humongous. We moved here to be in like a neighborhood, and then when we see like seaside situat, clear cut, and just throw up all these houses everywhere, when I see that lot, it just makes me think of that. We have friends that are directly behind, and my daughter goes there all the time. And when I was in the backyard, we literally can see right, I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's big, like boom, this is our new backyard. And it's such an eyesore, it's funny. From my house, now I'm going to have more light pollution, I can actually see it from Edgar Road, I can see the porch and all that, so that's just an extra neighbor, more people who went already, kind of in a tight spot in this. And then, like, what's from stopping everyone from putting up accessory dwellings and bringing Airbnb to them? So, those are my concerns.
Karen?
An accessory dwelling is not an Airbnb. Accessory dwelling, the primary dwell, the primary occupant, the primary has to live on the property.
By the renter.
But they, she can legally rent the property.
No, I get it, I get it.
Karen, perhaps we also could put into the record the comments that we received by email as well?
Yes. Okay, I received a comment from Marie Ahern, which was quite lengthy, and another comment from, let's see, here's another, from Randy Jarvis Hillary Tusher to the planning board. And both of them are very similar, they're concerned about the accessory apartment, et cetera, et cetera. She says, this is Ms. Ahern, an ex, she went to the town building department, and the entire second floor of the living space had been crossed out in an X marked in red. And I also will say that driving down Norwell Avenue last summer, there's this hose coming out of the basement with water that is going into the driveway, onto Norwell Avenue, and down Tilden to Egypt Beach Road. And I was a little concerned, you know, what is this? So I went to the building department and asked them about it, because the garage had been built, house had been built. And I said, is this an accessory apartment? And they said, no. And they showed me the plan, and there was a big X through it. And now we have, the X has been removed. So I think that what we're looking for here is looking for forgiveness after the horse left the barn. And again, as I had stated earlier, there are other issues besides the square footage. Many other issues that have to be dealt with that are part of an accessory apartment. So, okay, I've said my bit. Karen, anything else?
Do you have any other?
Anybody on there?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Randy Jarvis, represent three thirty-six Tilden Road. We're a small operation, whole lot's five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The house is just over a thousand square feet. We are what sits underneath this proposed AD directly behind it, and, well, we're to the side of it, I would say. So we look up at it, we see the side windows, we see the deck as it protrudes out from the face of the garage toward eighty-one Norwell. Significant amount of space if you're beneath it, okay? There's no way to escape the line of sight as it is currently constructed from the deck or the windows. There's been no mitigation effort that has been implemented just to date, which would obstruct the view from that structure down upon the house. We bought there just a year ago, we've done a little with respect to landscaping, because we're getting familiar with the area, and it's a short walk for our daughter to go to Wompertuck just down the street. We feel as if, without some type of landscaping, and when I say landscaping, I'm talking, you know, trees, foliage, you can't build a fence big enough, it's going to withstand the winds around here, it's going to cover those windows and, you know, protect our privacy, all right? It's going to have to be some other type of setup with landscaping. And, you know, notwithstanding the topics that were brought up, I'm not into building business, I've tried to account for the math that you folks are talking about in a very quick manner, but the bottom line is, I couldn't agree more with the board. If there's a standard for doing this, standard has to be mentioned, we've got, you know, stick with how we do business. But I, for one, don't want to have my young daughter be out in that backyard and have to worry about you staring down on me at any given hour of the day, as well as the back of the house in November. So, you know, nothing personal, but when we moved in, that was a garage, now it's become some, some bigger thing, my understanding, this is the first opportunity so that people can make public comment. And I would just like to say that, you know, we've got great neighbors who like to mind our own business and stay out of everybody's way, not trying to cause problems, but there, this is, this is tough.
Thank you. Could I just make a comment, please, to that?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Randy, was the garage?
Excuse me, you will direct it to me, please, thank you.
So, when, when Randy purchased the home at three thirty-six Tilden Road, the garage was already erected, compliant with zoning bylaws. The garage was there. I didn't hide the garage while he was buying the house. The garage was there. That's number one. Number two, I can see into Randy's living room from my own living room. These are tight, small lots. The lot itself, where the garage sits, is thirty percent bigger than his own house lot. And thirdly, Randy doesn't live full-time at three thirty-six Tilden Road.
That has not, no bearing on this at all. None, none, no, no, thank you, Ms.
Yes, first and foremost, I've made no comment in front of this board or in front of anyone else about the main structure of this house, okay? Well aware of the line of sight issues for the main, main part of the house. Number two, with respect to, I am the property owner, okay? And that is my residence, nobody else's business, what goes on inside that house is kept me, I pay bills, I pay the property tax. Let's make that clear. And I forget what the, the other thing you, and yes, very well aware that that was a garage when I purchased the house, a garage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, please? Sir?
Chair, State Representative Patrick Hurney. Thank you. I'm here to speak, not particularly, although I am in favor and supporting the project, obviously, I'm here as a member of the housing committee and legislator. And I want to speak to the issue from the thirty thousand foot view, for folks like myself, twenty-six years old, are unable to afford and live in the communities that they're running. We are three hundred thousand livable units short of demand in Massachusetts right now. Lumber tariffs to even resurrect any type of housing, whether it's their ADs or normal single-family homes, multifamily homes, the cost of doing that has gone up astronomically, with lumber tariffs alone going up forty-four percent the last two and a half years. And I don't want to rattle off too many statistics, but between two thousand and eight and two thousand and eighteen, the number of people like myself, my twelve cousins have lived here in town, the number of people between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-three years old that are living at home with their parents has gone from nine percent to twenty-three percent. Marriage rates are down, it's caused people to be unable to start families, and whether it's children of people that are homeowners, whether it's parents of the homeowners that are able to live here, they're unable to afford the community that they spent time growing up in. I'm grateful that we have this opportunity in Situate, not just this project, but I'm grateful that the folks in this town have the opportunity to build accessory dwellings, because I think it keeps families together, and I think it contributes to the fabric of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurney. I will tell you that accessory apartments in Situate have been on the books since nineteen We have worked very hard and very hard to ensure that our bylaw is actually one of the best in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. However, we cannot have a precedent set by doing it backwards. That's not how it's done. It isn't. And we all should know better, that this is not the way it's done. Because this opens the door to people doing things that they, you know, if somebody goes by the rules and they're shut down, or they do whatever they're supposed to do, and then someone else, regardless of who that is, comes along and does what they want to do, and they want us to forgive them. I think, under the circumstances, we're going to need some work, just a minute, please, on this accessory apartment. Ms. Lewis is going to have to figure out the mitigation, she's going to have to figure out landscaping, she's going to have to figure out lighting, she's going to have to show us an ASBILT so that we know exactly how high this building is, we need to see the setbacks, these are all things that would have been required if this had been done correctly, in a correct manner. Not putting the cart before the horse. I'll open it up to anybody in the audience.
If there's anyone on the phone that would like to kind of leave it star nine, to raise your hand.
Yes, Ms. Lewis?
If I may, just to, number one, thank all my neighbors that are here in attendance and concerned about this and expressing their concerns, and I mean that sincerely, whether you're for it or against it. I did a lot of work on this the last couple of years to improve the neighborhood, and I think it has aesthetically improved the neighborhood and made the neighborhood safer. Because you'll, you'll go back and look at the police reports, there were heroin addicts that were there prior to me cleaning up and building a new structure. That's number one. Number two, the structure itself isn't going anywhere. Irrespective of the use of it, the structure itself will remain. I, it, it's not going to shorten, it's not going to come in ten feet, it's not going to go down ten feet, so the structure itself is there. As far as any mitigation, again, I, I associate that with sort of big developers that are impacting, you know, people's businesses along the way. Any landscaping, fencing, lighting, tenants, et cetera. I think the, the reason for the policy to have the homeowner live on campus, so to speak, is obviously, if my neighbors don't trust that I would do the best thing by them, they hopefully will believe that an individual will do the best thing for themselves. So all those issues, I take personally to heart, because I'm there, and that, I'm sure, was the logic behind the policy. So in terms of landscaping, lighting, et cetera, anything that impacts them is going to also impact me. So I'm going to do the best that I can for that situation. I just want to reassure the folks of, of that progress, and we have made progress. In fact, I've spoken with Randy's daughter's mother about fencing and what she might like to have in it, because our backyards, forget the garage, we're on top of each other with the backyards with the houses. The garage, there's more, there's more interaction and impact with the house than there is with the garage, in terms of lighting and privacy and everything else. So, you know, I'm aware, and, and we have these older sized lots that, you know, are non-conforming in today's world, that we all have to, you know, try to, try to work with, and, and I, I've done that repeatedly. I mean, the house over at Lighthouse Road is a forty-four hundred square foot lot. You know, we, neighbors talk all the time in terms of trying to figure out parking spaces and everything else. So I have a long history of that. I just want to reassure the neighbors and the board that, that, you know.
The issue is, Ms. Lewis, I think that we should continue this. I think that I would like you to put together some type of landscaping plan, lighting plan, these are things that we would have asked for for any accessory apartment. That's what we would have asked for. We want an ASBILT, we want, Karen will give you a list of what we would like to have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did submit an ASBILT to the building department, I don't know why it's not showing, but I'll double back with them and make sure.
I did not see the ASBILT when I looked.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what happened there, I'll, I'll do that.
Dad will tell us if it's built in the proper place, and a detached garage has to meet all the primary setbacks.
Right.
And we want a verification of the height, too, just because the planning board has to make a finding that it meets that. And if it meets that, it meets that.
Yeah. And I don't know why that, that would happen, but I'll, I'll, I'll double back to the building department, make sure that's there.
Okay.
But again, I don't want anyone to think that, that, again, the chronology of this thing was because, I was told, because there wasn't a primary corrected yet, I couldn't apply for this permit yet.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but at any rate, Mr. McJoughlin, you had your hand up.
Sure, I do. And it's not necessarily just about this particular unit, but accessory dwellings in general. I'm not quite sure what section or subsection of by thirty point two that she violated, but you said that this is something that's been done backwards.
Yes.
And I'm just looking for the forwards way in the bylaw, and I don't see anywhere where it says that you can't put the building up, because you guys are allowing the use of the structure. So if the structure conforms to A through I, I don't understand what she violated. And again, it's, it's on any accessory structure that comes in front of you guys, not necessarily just this one, but there are other people who have constructed barns and things like that, and then come in to you for a permit. And, and you're absolutely right, that if she's asking for that permit for use now, you can ask for all those conditions, and if she doesn't meet them, she doesn't get it. But I don't see where putting the building up has anything really to do with the accessory structure in, in the bylaws itself.
Thank you, Stephen.
So, why don't we, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just, I mean, just, I want to put in my two cents of where, I, I've kind of been thinking similarly to Mr. Borkland. Also, procedurally, I don't necessarily find fault, but for me, I, it's the question of the actual square footage. You know, is, is this bigger than what's allowable by the bylaw? And that's where I'm getting stuck on, because otherwise we're setting a precedent, or asking for a variance or something, which is a much different scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to go through the list of things we need. One of them is the verification on the square footage, right? We need the ASBILT. We need to know what the lighting plan looks like, what the landscaping plan looks like. What other things do we have on the list?
I mean, she, going down the list.
Two means of egress, right? We need to confirm that.
She has the parking, she has, she has provided the fee for the sewage.
Mm-hmm.
She has, there's sewer and water department comments as well that were submitted. She has, she has met those requirements.
Okay.
The board will have to decide if this is subordinate to the primary dwelling.
Yep.
And it's only going to be one accessory dwelling on the lot, and it's a complete separate housekeeping unit. And it's a complete separate housekeeping unit.
Okay.
Yep. So let's get that laundry list of things done and then we'll come back and look at it.
Did you have something, Madam? Okay. Do you have a continuance?
Do you think that you'd be able to get all this done by March... We have room on the March 10 meeting. Would you be able to submit things at least two weeks before that?
Yes.
All right, so then I would recommend March 10 at 6:30.
6:30.
I move to accept the applicant's request for a continuance of the special permit accessory dwelling public hearing for 81 Norwell Avenue until March 10, 2022, at what time, Karen?
6:30.
6:30. And the time for filing with the town clerk until March 25th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, people. Steve, you were great. Thank you. I resent that Burney was here.
Is he for other reasons? Is he here?
That's his mother.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Somebody's got to tell me these things.
I'm telling you.
All right, people, we have a...
Take your conversations outside.
Outside with the doors closed. There we go. Either in or out. I love it when I have power. Mariah Joanna.
Next thing.
Huh?
Are we on the zoning thing?
Yep. Joe Joyce is here. I knew he would be here.
Okay. We now have our zoning workshop. So the first one is Section 440.5 Business District. This is nothing more than a housekeeping... What?
We made a mistake.
Uh-oh.
We have two hearings at 6:30 on March 10.
What's the second hearing?
Seven New Driftway.
Excuse me?
Seven New Driftway.
Can we move it?
Move Seven New Driftway.
All right.
All right. This is Business Districts. 440.5. We need to add the language in a B and/or VCN Village Center and Neighborhood District. All uses permitted as a right or by special permit and uses accessory thereto shall be conducted wholly within an enclosed building except for the following, et cetera, et cetera. So all we've done is add and/or VCN Village Center and Neighborhood. It's just housekeeping. It keeps it in line with everything else that we have. It was an oversight. So that's that one. Any comment? All right? 602.3 Setback and Yard Requirements. This is probably going to...
620.3.
Well, I have 602. There's always something. 620 point what?
3.
3. All right. Setback and yard requirements. Okay, we had talked about this concerning the R3 residential district, which has a required side yard distance of eight feet. The R1 and R2 have 15 feet. So it was thought to bring this R3 from eight to 15 feet. We talked to the zoning board of appeals with the chairman and... I don't think he's here. He's not here tonight, is he? All right. All right. So have him comment on this, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Starting.
Oh, there you are.
Good evening. Yes, so, Madam Chair, we did speak about setbacks in our meeting and I did raise that it was the wish of Situate or the board to limit the size of homes built with respect to the size of lots. That looking at our setbacks in Situate would be one logical way to do that. I apologize if there was any confusion, but I did not mean to imply that we should focus on the R3 district and effectively almost double the setbacks in that district. In looking at that district particularly, I think that doing so might have an opposite effect in that it will create an overwhelming state of pre-existing nonperformance in that zone, thereby making it arguably easier for homes to be expanded even closer to the lot line, putting aside the fact that, given the average size of lots in that district, 15 feet may very well not make much sense. My point in our meeting, in which we were discussing potential changes to the code, was that if the desire was to limit the size of homes on lots, that our setbacks overall should be looked at. And my recommendation to be doing that would be to look at a particular district, try to get a sense of the average distance that existing homes were from lot lines and see if there was room in those districts or a median district to increase the setback a certain amount. My guess would be when we looked at those statistics, almost doubling a setback in a given district, probably wouldn't end up being wise once we look at the statistics of where homes sit with respect to lot.
All right, thank you.
Members on the board?
I have to say that in thinking about this more the last couple of weeks, I think I agree with the chair from zoning board of appeals. I think that the 15 feet seems a little bit arbitrary at this point without further study. And also, I did also have the concern of, given that R3 is more of our dense housing, dense zoning area, is, you know, many of those structures have been there for years and years and years, especially some of the older areas of town. Would this be creating an enormous number of now non-conforming properties? And I started just looking at kind of the zoning map and some of the lot assessors, parcels and stuff online and it seemed like it would be a pretty significant change for that area and a lot of new non-conforming properties.
Karen?
No, I agree with you.
All right. Steve?
Yeah, I think this was my exact question a little while ago after I missed this meeting, but yeah, I would agree. I don't think we want to create a whole laundry list of non-conforming lots.
Is there anybody in the audience that agrees with us? About eight feet? Or rather, 15 feet if you don't? No, what, Stephen?
Of course I have to say that, right?
Of course you do. Would you just give us your address?
Sure. I actually presently live at 861 Main Street in Norwell, but I hopefully will be coming back to Situate soon. But this particular bylaw, again, I went through it as well and I talked to a number of the engineers and homeowners have been calling me, asking me, "What do we do? What do we do?" And I said, "I can't understand why this was proposed this way because it really does not make sense and it's going to have a backfire effect." And I'm really glad to hear from the zoning board chair that he has the same sentiments that I had. The only thing that I would hope would be that the plan to end this particular bylaw is to just vote to take this bylaw off the ballot, off the warrant and get on to the other ones. But I totally agree.
This is a workshop.
All right, Karen. I think the general consensus is we're going to IP this.
All right, well, I mean, at this point, we don't even have a warrant. We can just remove it.
Just remove it.
Right. This is a working session.
The warrant's not gone to print. It's just a placeholder on the warrant right now. It does appear in the legal ad, which was published in the paper today. So at the public hearing on February 10, I would just suggest that we say that we want to take it off because people who might not listen tonight might still think it's there.
All right.
One more thing.
Yes?
So that being said, the reason this was proposed, I'm assuming it was brought up for a purpose. It wasn't just a random decision. So it was my understanding that this had to do with the issue of density and massing within R3 districts. So I would say, you know, even if we are going to remove this, you know, maybe what is our follow-up, maybe in conjunction with the zoning board of appeals, of how do we still want to address the issue of why this was brought up in the first place? I don't think we just take it off and forget about it.
Oh, we're not going to forget about it.
So...
We'll talk about it after town meeting. Okay? All right. So, moving rapidly along. Now we are at Section 610.1 Lot Area and With Requirements. And this is 610.1B. We're adding a sentence here that says, "Any lot created after April 11, 2022 shall have dimensions sufficient that a circle of 50 feet diameter can be drawn tangent to any property line at all points without the boundaries of said circle passing over the opposite property line." And the rationale here was to basically put an end to rat tails and to these odd-shaped lots. And a number of them come to mind that are basically two feet wide that sort of meander around and nobody knows who owns what. So this is just... Many towns have this type of bylaw. Norwell has it.
Many towns have a lot-shaped bylaw. Some of them in different forms. Some of them put a circle within a square. But this is what we've determined to be the best and the easiest to understand for Situate.
Okay. Stephen, you're looking very puzzled back there.
Who determined 50 feet is the bottom number that we should use?
Because we have a 50-foot frontage, Section 6, finding that allows a driveway, whatever. So 50 feet, we want to get rid of those two-foot lot thingies. That's what we want, Stephen.
Okay, so on a 50-foot frontage lot, you're required to have 50 feet from the frontage street to the dwelling. So on the back of the lot, and the only reason I'm asking this, a 50-foot lot. If it's out behind your house and you're kind of trying to pick up some square footage to then build a lot and have 40,000 or 80,000 if it happens to be a 50-foot special permit lot, say, out on the west end, I don't understand what the difference is between 50 feet, 40 feet, 60 feet? Is it just a random number that you picked? Or, I don't know, I mean, a rat tail is a rat tail. Two feet I can understand. 10 feet could be a good number. 20 feet could be a good number. So I just want to know, is this just a random number that was picked out of a hat?
We have...
No, it's not. We picked 50 feet because the town allows 50-foot frontage lots. 50 feet seems to be a reasonable number versus some of the other rat tails that we have. I mean, we have two-foot rat tails, we have five-foot rat tails, we have 10-foot rat tails. It makes it very difficult to determine whose property is what property. And yes, we want to prevent lot area from being accomplished in mismanaged ways.
So this is being proposed to prevent some development on single-family lots, to create lots that could potentially provide housing. Say if a septic system had it located further back, it has to be 50 feet under this bylaw to get to where the septic system is, even if you are just putting a pipe in.
Yes.
Say a 20-foot distance or a 50-foot distance or something like that. An opening to a leachage.
Yes.
It just be very careful that if you start to see more 40B projects on these land developments and the zoning board has to deal with the 40Bs, it's not the developers that are looking to do the 40Bs. It's the regulations that get put in place which prevent people from using the property in the right manner. So that's all, and vote it through.
Oh, thank you so much, Stephen. You really couldn't do it without you.
It's my life.
I know it is. It's absolutely amazing. Karen?
We've prepared several slides. If anybody is interested in seeing the slides to show how egregious some of the lots have been coming in in the past 10 years, five years. If anybody would...
I think we need to see them.
Yeah, show them up.
Yes.
I know. Ah, here we are. All right, Karen? All right.
This one has, I mean, this one has...
Why don't you, yeah, just stand up there and point them out?
Oh, here we go, Stephen.
I just want to be able to see the plan.
All right.
This one has buildable area here, a very narrow, probably a five-foot, 10-foot strip here and the other part of the buildable area there. And that's to be done, that's been done to create part of the lot area.
So it's like a dumbbell?
Yes.
It's a dumbbell.
I believe the house was located in the other part. I think the house was located over there.
You're real quick on the draw here, girl. Okay.
Actually, is that talking?
Where is the septic system located on that?
I don't remember. I think it was over there.
The engineer might know.
Gregory Morse, 167 Tac Factory, Mon Drive. Being the engineer of record of this plan, the septic system was sited on the left-hand side because that's where the favorable soil conditions were. It could have been sited on the right where the buildable portion of the lot was and we would have had to have taken down the existing house to make these setbacks comply. So it was laid out that way particularly because the soil conditions warranted it.
Okay, thank you. All right, next.
Sorry, when you go from a PDF to a PowerPoint, it gets very...
This is Route 3A project?
This is Route 3A and we have, very long, we have anywhere, we have five-foot rat tails that extend anywhere from 300 to 400 feet just to get the lot area. The buildable portions generally here and down and here, but you need the backland up by the wetlands in order to get the upland to meet the zoning requirement.
And that's the high school on the eastern side of the...
That's the high school over there.
This one here is a two-foot strip between lot areas so that a common driveway did not need to be constructed.
Smart move.
Thank you, Stephen.
It's a great move. That saved tens of thousands of dollars and nobody will ever see that two-foot strip out there. So that was a really smart thing to do.
And it begs the question, who owns the two-foot strip ultimately?
Well, if you look at the plan, it'll tell you.
The lot lines, right, the lot lines, but property owners get confused sometimes.
It left town. We're set while we need them.
Well, I think people get the idea of what, I mean, what we're trying to prevent, and we will probably have handouts at town meeting, because we're seeing that this doesn't really, it's hard for the audience to see the, the pictures.
Okay, all right. Any comments from the audience besides Mr. Stephen Bedrocklin?
Mr. Gregory Morse, the Wi-Fi.
It's what?
The Wi-Fi went out.
Oh, well. That's the live from the.
Reporting in progress.
Oh, thank you. Okay, anybody have any further comments on this?
Edith?
Yeah.
In Town Hall, are you there?
We're right here. Yes, Anthony?
Yes? Fantastic, you are muted. Um, Jacob, if you want to unmute that, sorry, we just had a little technical difficulty there. I apologize for that, I'm not sure what happened.
We lost the Wi-Fi.
That's all. All right. Mr. Chairman from Zoning Board of Appeals, you had your hand up?
Yeah, hold on.
Did you hear me up there?
Yep.
We hear you? Fantastic, listen, we were still streaming live, we're still recording, so you may continue, apologies again.
Okay. Mr. McCary?
Yes? Hello, sorry, I was, I was part and parcel to the technical difficulties. Uh, well, what I wanted to contribute at first is to generally comment on the idea. I, I agree with this proposed change to the bylaw. I agree with the motivation to get rid of what we seem to be calling these, these rat tails. I do think that your points should be considered. We have a bylaw where 50 feet is required for frontage and lot width, that's a minimum lot width requirement, obviously there are different scenarios. I would encourage the planning board to make consideration that perhaps the limitation on that, on that circle should be less than 50 feet. There, there is an argument that in order to clean these lots, for legitimate reasons, legitimate lot shapes, there may somewhat regularly be a reason to have a lot be at least a little bit narrower in a rear or in a corner than it is at the street or through the center of the building or home. And if we propose this change and require it to be 50 feet in width at all areas, we're going to be facing more variance applications. And we're likely going to be faced in a scenario where we're facing more variance applications that should be granted under the variance standard, especially with how directly connected lot shape and soil conditions are to Massachusetts variance standards. So, I think it might serve both of our boards and the town well to continue with this change to the bylaw. I think it's well-founded, but it may make sense to lower that number a bit. All, all the examples that I saw were five or 10 or two feet in width. I think the number that we put forth could be above all of those, but it should probably be somewhere in between those numbers, 50.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Mr. Morse?
I'm, I'm wondering if you would consider a, kind of an addendum to that or revising it, so that maybe areas of your lot that are smaller than whatever the number is, whether it's 50 or 10, aren't included towards your lot area. They can still be part of your lot, and that would be the perfect example of some of those plans that were put up there, where you have favorable soil conditions for a septic system in one part of the lot, or you have a wetlands constraint in one part of the lot, which make it so that the house is separated from where the septic system is, for example. But to connect it, you need to physically run a pipe from the house to the septic system. You can do that in an area that's less than 50 feet wide. If you're talking about doing this because of density purposes, trying to cut down on the number of lots, you could simply make it so that if the lot was less wide than whatever the value is, that that portion of the lot doesn't count toward the minimum lot area. I can think of several examples where you have property lines here in town that are odd-shaped. We were not laid out as a grid formation like Midwest. We have lot lines that date back to colonial times. There are several odd-shaped lots out there. I can think of several lots that are less than 50 feet wide at locations as they exist today, let alone when they get cut up even further. I think you need to consider those applications.
Karen?
We did consider this partially, but our consultants thought that having one standard was, would be a lot easier for the building department and the planning board to interpret, but I think we should go back and revisit that.
All right. Mr. Morse?
May I ask which consultants are being involved in this discussion?
We had Judy Barrett and, um, Bob Mitchell.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Moving on. Is anybody else in the audience?
Any public comment from, um, uh, remote? Please raise your hand or hit star nine if you buy a telephone.
Okay. All right, now we go to marijuana, which is why I think everybody's here. You're on, my dear.
Thank you all for coming. We are all very aware that there is very real concern about placing adult-use marijuana in Sittiwat, but please be advised that this workshop is not a referendum on cannabis in Massachusetts or in Sittiwat. We are not here to discuss the pros and cons of cannabis legalization. What we are here to do is craft a responsible zoning bylaw for the town of Sittiwat that we will need to have ready should voters at town meeting decide to overturn the existing ban on cannabis in Sittiwat. Your comments and your questions and your suggestions will all help us craft the existing, the, the bylaw that we are looking to, to craft for it right now. It has nothing to do with cannabis, it has everything to do with legal land use. So, I know that this is a very emotional issue. This is, I would say, not really the time or place that we're going to discuss that. We're going to discuss about what our job as a planning board is to do about legally citing a business in Sittiwat. Okay? Say, I mean, you have a fabulous PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully it will work. I personally do not read PowerPoint presentations. If you would like me to, I'd be happy to, but we all know how to read, right? So, if there's anything you want to pick on in that PowerPoint presentation, we can discuss it, okay? That sound okay to everybody?
I think it should be presented by someone, so people.
Okay. All right.
I'll read it. Okay. Town history with marijuana. Give me. 2014, annual town meeting votes to allow registered marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana. 2008, small amounts of marijuana decriminalized in state of Massachusetts. 2013, medical marijuana initiative law, initiative law took effect in Massachusetts. In 2017, legalization of recreational cannabis took effect July 28th, 2017. 2016, ballot question, town of Sittiwat votes no to recreational marijuana. 2017, temporary moratoria, Section 491, put in place until November 2018 for recreational marijuana. Cannabis Control Commission develops regulations, town to undertake a planning process during this period. Any questions? Would you identify yourself, sir?
Sure. Bobby Lorenzo, Hickory Lane. Are towns that surround us that also were considered no towns, no well-being, unco-passed, are they going through the same process?
No.
So, why wouldn't they be going through it?
Because we have presented this to you because we had a citizen's petition come forward to us, and we decided as a board, the citizen's petition would not carry as much weight, and we have the legal planning behind us. We, we engaged a, a, a lawyer to help us craft this bylaw. It's much better to come from us as a legal planning board to present you the very best that we can. We do not want this challenge. If we do not cite this legally, we have no control over where it goes after that. This is why we want to take this under our wing and make sure it gets put forward in the most legal and measures that we have in the, in the town.
So, with that concern, other towns, assuming, don't have that concern?
Not right now.
That somebody would bring a petition forward and, and ram it through?
Apparently not now.
They could have it, though. That could happen.
That could happen.
It just happened to hap, happen in our town.
So, I'm, I'm just sort of surprised that they wouldn't be taking up the same initiative. Uh, they, were their bans temporary, like ours was?
Our ban is not temporary. Can I offer a point of clarification?
Sure.
Who is this, please?
I'm Amber Yeldon, 81st Harrow Road, Town of Sittiwat, and co-founder of South of Fair and Company. Thank you all so much. And I'm assuming there's another slide.
There's a lot of them.
On this topic, and that's kind of the, the context that this gentleman's asking about. We do not have a temporary ban in Sittiwat. We have a, a non-temporary general bylaw and zoning bylaw that will prohibit adult-use marijuana businesses.
Well, we will get to that.
Okay, but there's a confusion about whether you can use the word moratorium, so maybe there's the next slide, so.
All right.
But I guess my question for the planning board, just for context, and I don't want to interrupt your presentations, um, Mr. McCary, you were saying that you're preparing in the, in the case that somebody will be bringing forward a general bylaw change, or the planning board can, we got it all covered?
I, I can't explain what you mean, I'm sorry.
So, um, in your introduction, you were mentioning that the, um, the planning board is interested in being prepared, so we don't get stuck with, for example, a poorly written citizen's petition, if we're not well-planned or knowing. Is it, does that mean that the planning board is not planning to put forward a general bylaw change?
General bylaw change will be on the line.
So, we're not preparing for the worst scenario, the planning board is bringing forward both things, right? The planning board is saying, we plan to undo what the citizens did in 2012.
Based on town meeting, yes.
So, how does an endorsement for changing the bylaw, but just to make sure that it's done in a, in a, a way that if it does pass, it's, you know.
But what are you presenting? You're putting, you're putting a bylaw change forward.
Okay.
Could you just sit, so we can do?
It's confusing, though, do you understand my?
Well, we want to get to it.
Get to it, please. Stephen?
This is just a, a quick one. Is this going to go to town meeting, this PowerPoint presentation, to people?
Yes.
And, and I'm just asking, as I look at it, it's kind of, just, this first slide is kind of confusing, because we've got 2014, 2015, 2013, 2017, 2016, 17, 18.
Okay.
I, I would just say, is there a way you can just do this chronologically, that this is what happened starting in 2008?
All right.
Why don't we try to get? I get it, why don't we just get through the whole thing, and we'll take all the comments at once?
All right. All right. All right. 2018 prohibition of recreational marijuana establishments.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. That's it? Okay. Purpose, um, planning board is required to reg.
Hold on, just skip the slide, we need to go back to slide two, please.
I'm confused.
Your, your paper is fun and.
Right here. I don't, I started with this, and you said no.
Okay.
Continued town history, 2018 prohibition of recreational marijuana establishments, zoning and general bylaws adopted. 2021, citizen petition filed for special town meeting, 2021, to allow adult-use marijuana establishments. Proponent referred to planning board for study at town meeting. 2022, planning board develops bylaws in response to citizen's petition. Now, we have purpose. Planning board is required to regulate legal land use. Adult-use marijuana legalized in 2017. Legal land use includes recreational, adult use, and medical marijuana. Establish an adult-use marijuana section in town bylaws. Bylaw needs to meet the requirements of the Attorney General. Addressing the concerns of the residents of the town of Sittiwat by implementing safeguards within the bylaw regarding the citing of adult-use marijuana establishments. This workshop is not a referendum on marijuana in Massachusetts, as it is legal in the state. This workshop is in response to last year's citizen's petition that did not have planning's input and did not include the myriad of protections for Sittiwat that planning wrote into the proposed bylaw.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
Do you want to take the question, or do you want to ask the caller to stay on?
Ask him to wait. Let's get through this. All right. Okay. Purpose, change registered marijuana dispensary RMD to Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, MTC. Medical marijuana adopted by the town in 2014, obligated by the state to allow medical marijuana facilities. 2013, medical marijuana initiative law. Update the terminology and regulations for the medical marijuana portion of the zoning bylaw to comply with the Cannabis Control Commission, CCC, and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, 935 CMR 501.000. The purpose of 935 CMR 501.000 is to implement Statute 2017, Chapter 55, and act to ensure safe access to marijuana and mass general laws, Chapter 941. What does the adult-use bylaw do? Limits the number of establishments allowed within the town of Sittiwat to two establishments. Number of marijuana retailers is not to exceed 20% of the number of alcohol licenses issued for retail sale of alcohol, not to be drunk on premises. Limits marijuana establishments to an identified list. Marijuana courier, marijuana cultivator, marijuana delivery operator, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, marijuana testing facility, and marijuana transporter. Limits size of an establishment, limits canopy size, prohibits drive-through marijuana dispensaries. Limits location. Allowed marijuana uses only permitted in specific appropriate zoning districts as set forth in the bylaw. No establishment is to be located within 400 feet of a public or private school providing education K through 12. No establishment is to be located within 400 feet of a daycare or preschool facility licensed by the Mass Department of Early Education and Care. No establishment is to be located within 400 feet of any religious educational facility. Requires special permit and site plan approval issued by the planning board. Requires a host agreement granted by the select board. The law regarding host community agreements requires that the money collected by the town shall be spent on addressing the impacts of the marijuana use in town, i.e. preventing adolescent drug use, education, and police. Where can adult-use establishments be located? Although the following districts are listed as acceptable, acceptable by the bylaw's table of uses, the proposed marijuana establishment must still comply with required setbacks under the bylaw and be awarded a host community agreement from the select board at that location. Business district, marijuana retailer is only allowed by special permit. Village center and neighborhood district, marijuana retailer, operator, or courier, transporter, testing facility are only allowed by special permit in the following sub-districts. Green Bush Village Center, Green Bush Business, New Driftway Transit Village, North River Residential Neighborhood, Driftway Business Park, North Sittiwat Village Center, North Sittiwat Outer Village. Marijuana cultivator and marijuana product manufacturer are only allowed by special permit following sub-district only. Driftway Business Park. That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Do we want this?
No, I'll take care of it.
You take care of that later. All right, go ahead. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Jeff Nicolo, Trump Kent Street. And I'm a little confused, this is what's coming to town board, or you're looking for input to amend it, or?
Yeah, this is the work, this is workshop. So, this is what we've developed at this point to implement the requirements here.
Got it.
And protect the town.
Right.
And if there are changes in input and that kind of stuff, we're here to listen.
Now's the time.
Right, thank you. So, I guess, I, I have just mostly questions about how you came up with this. So, um, who came up with the buffer zone language relative to what the state does and what, um, surrounding communities who allow marijuana establishments? And what would the driver be on that? I, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, the law attorney number?
I think the state, the state requirement is 500 feet.
Yeah.
And it's between the, the entry of a school. And it's between the entry of a school and sort of the geometric center of the entry for the marijuana establishment, so...
So what was it thinking to go below that?
No, other people need to talk.
Okay. But I asked information to you.
No, no.
Steve, can I just add one addition to that? Unless the town votes for lesser amount, is what the buffer zone says.
Sure. No, I'm aware of that. And are you familiar with what Marshfield's buffer zones are? Because they passed. Did you do some due diligence to be on the state, or just the state, and then chose to draw it?
We did all the due diligence. We consulted a lawyer. We felt that 400 feet was appropriate here. We cannot, once it's moved, you can't go up, you can always go down. So just be aware of that. We are aware of where our commercial districts are, and we know that they are not within K through 12, which is set by the state. Under the advisement of the police chief, we put in daycare. And on hearing about use this for the Catholic Church, we decided to include educational religious facilities as well. So we are very aware of where we know these can go, and that's where we picked that number from. We can increase that number to 500, we can decrease it to 200. That's why we have a workshop.
Got it. And I would just suggest, you know, a number of the allowed zoning buffer zones that I've seen from towns aren't just educational institutions, they are more focused, because educational institutions, I think the motivation is for children, like not having to be too close. They add several additional places where children can go to.
In the old cannabis commission, there was a requirement for where children...
Right.
That is no longer part of the cannabis commission. And since this is a new bylaw for us, we are only under the new cannabis commission bylaw. That's what we base that on.
But not 500 before, I think.
Not yet.
I mean, we have a chance to amend it.
Good talk about that.
The town, yeah.
Val, you had your hand up.
Val, thank you, first street. Um, because as I said, there were other areas...
Could you just speak, we've got a fan blowing over here, it's hard to hear.
Initially, I think it's all redlined, obviously schools. But is there any reason why you would not include the other areas, library, parks, field, those things that are typically used by children? What is the problem with including them? Playground, I'm sorry, playground. I mean, is there a valid reason why those cannot be included?
Karen?
It's not included in the state regulations. What we tried to do is we looked at the state regulations, and we tried to follow from there, and we heard other, like Patty said, after a meeting with the police chief, we added daycare facilities. After hearing the scuttlebutt around the community, we added religious education. But we're trying to stick closely to the Cannabis Control Commission regulations.
I just want to say, there aren't state regulations. It is literally local zoning boards. So I'm sorry to interject, but I think there is recommendations for medical marijuana centers only, those ones that Situate ones were based on in the past, and it is now not that way at all. It's not true. You can go on the Cannabis Commission website. There's some, I shared with you Karen back in the fall, some documents from regional planning board in Western Mass that develop model zoning bylaws. And it's, I could do a whole zoning presentation on it, I've studied this for so long, and I'd be truly honored to do that. I know you guys have a lot on your plates. But it really matters, of course, where you're implementing the land use, right? So what we want, how we could do it in Situate is very different than they do it in Springfield for any reason, including, we have to make it, you know, reasonably practical for businesses to sign here if we want that in the first place, which I think is a further question. But if we're to develop zoning for something that people may want, it should fit the community, right? And I think we need a whole lot more to do on that in overall. But there is no state zoning. It is determined by the local board, and that's deliberately promised to statewide legislation that was established in 2016.
That's why we're having the workshop.
I know, when you refer to something that doesn't exist, I don't...
There is a cannabis...
Well, regulations exist.
Regulations, I'm sorry.
There are regulations.
And there are no statewide zoning.
Okay, can I just make a comment? All right. We're promulgating a new rule here. It's very complex, there's a lot going on, you're obviously well-versed in this. I strongly recommend to anyone that wants to make substantive comments like this, please write written comments. Get the bylaw, mark it up, write written comments, submit it, so we can all review.
I'll do that.
This is really a public workshop for people to express their ideas, and looking at me, people here, there's people online, everyone wants to talk a little bit, we don't want to be here till 1:00 in the morning. I think it's really important that if you have substantive comments that could actually shake the bylaw, please go through the rulemaking process, submit comments so we can review them offline and then discuss them. Otherwise, this is just circular.
Just run around in circles. Right. You, sir.
Martin Henry from Melwar Plaza. So is it, am I correct in hearing that there's no geocentric buffer zone, like not 400 feet from the geo-center of a place to the center of the other place, or just from the black line to the black line?
No, it's the centers, it's the geometric center.
The Situate version is Situate's center, it's building, but it can be anything. Other towns do it all different ways. Cities do it certain ways.
Excuse me, do not interrupt again. I will ask you to leave. Okay? Sorry.
We have several people on the line that have some questions. May I just do some of them because they've been holding for a very long time.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mahar, you're on.
Thank you very much, Dennis Mahar, 90th and 19th Road. First, we're looking at the PowerPoint presentation here. Is there any way we can get back to the inside room there, where we can see who's not talking?
Absolutely.
I know you're all masked up. Thank you very much, appreciate that. I just wanted to ask, I think what we're doing here tonight, you've got the cow before the horse. Situate residents are voting twice not to have marijuana sold in this town. You are now putting a big banner up saying, "We are open to business." We are not open to business. We do not want marijuana here. This board should not be discussing any type of bylaw of where this country is until people vote at this point. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, Mr. Mahar, it has been several years since the town has passed, had their last election about marijuana. In that time, people's views have changed, our demographics have changed tremendously. We are merely trying to prepare the town for something that may or may not happen. But we want to be in a position that if it comes before us, it will pass legally and we will use our land use correctly. I don't know that the cow is before the horse, I think we're doing a very good job laying this out for everybody in a very timely manner. Thank you. All right. Do we have some...
We have the next question on the line.
We had him. Well, he's still on the line.
Go ahead, Mr. Saunders.
Hi, Keith Saunders, 90th Summer Street. I am the original petitioner for this entire escapade, so if anybody has any vitriol that's correct, you just send it my way. The battle over whether marijuana is legal or not was lost six years ago in 2016, and actually legally, your slide presentation should refer to it as cannabis. I would like to applaud the planning board for the hard work that you have done. I know very well the work that you've done, and I've been staying in touch with the people who you've been working with all the way up to then, making myself present at the time. It's a necessity for Situate. We will have legal cannabis stores, very much like we have legal labor stores, and they're going to be everywhere. And so Situate's losing out 3% of gross sales, and 3% of gross sales on top of that is going to be impacted by not having a store. The revenues are huge, the jobs are good, they're stable, they're well-paying, they're very well-paying for retail jobs. The business is small, they're not going to be huge businesses, there's no worry about Walmart or Wal-Mart. There's no Walmart that's going to come to Situate. We are going to have a very isolated small market, it's not going to be...
I'll ask to Mr. Saunders.
Mr. Saunders, we lost you. We lost him.
He's gone.
Mr. Biniani's on the line.
All right, Mr. Biniani.
I challenge you to go to a dispensary, seven miles within Town Hall, if you can go there either right now tonight, or you can go there tomorrow, either in Marshfield or there's two of them in Rockland, leave your license in your car and try to get into the building. I don't care how old you are, they will never let you in the building. Meanwhile, I can bring my kid, who was seven years old at the time, into CPS where ammonia might be off the shelf. Ammonium might be is an opiate, it's fully accessible to a seven-year-old child. Cannabis is not, and it's not, it's not going to be. It's simply not going to be. So the concerns about children having more access to it are misplaced, to say, and there were 1,900 people in Situate who grew up with cannabis every single day. So we know exactly what happens when you legalize it, because it's exactly what's happened now. They have no problem getting cannabis today. So I want to say thank you to planning board, and thank you for everybody's concern, but really it's misplaced, you think kids are going to get more access to cannabis.
Thank you.
If you legalize it, the small business, the local business, and it's going to actually benefit the town in a hundred percent of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. I appreciate your input. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Biniani's on the line.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am again. First of all, I want to just thank the planning board for bringing this up. And for those of you that may not know, Mr. Saunders has brought this before town meeting last year, and the planning board is just really trying to get ahead of the curve in terms of the town having some say in terms of where these establishments are going. I am completely against the establishments. I've spoken to Mr. Saunders many times about it, but this is good planning. This is us setting guidelines and setting restrictions in terms of where, if this moratorium happens to pass, and that's not a given, and that will be decided by you at town meeting, by the way, we will have some bylaws in place that says where these stores can go and what they can do. So I applaud everyone that's putting this together, I'm happy to see everybody there. Go to town meeting if you really want to be heard, because it probably would have passed at the last town meeting that wasn't IP. And all these things are also debatable at town meeting. If you don't like 400 feet and you want to add playgrounds, all of this stuff can be changed. So this is a very proactive meeting for you guys to be able to get, and all of us to be able to get, but what we want our town to look like. So it's not a given that this is going to happen, but if it does happen, we will have something in place. So again, thank you to the planning board for working on this.
Thank you.
Can I just add on to that, just a word of caution, because I want to build on what Ben said, is let's not wait to town meeting to get input.
Right. That's why we have a public...
That's why we're here. And written comments would be greatly appreciated.
You have two more comments on the line, do you want to...
Well, let's take somebody to the road first. This man right here, yes?
Hi, I'm Danny Gillis, I'm from Town Aberdeen Drive. And I appreciate you doing the, being proactive about it. I can't help but wonder the source of it. It's Lambert, he was saying that he was consulting a lawyer. You know, he's pro-cannabis. I want to know how much, to Jeff's point, to Amber's point, how much work you've done with other municipalities, Charlton in particular.
Well, let me try, Mr. Gillis.
I'd love to get more input from, you know, peer-to-peer, wondering where they could have been better about some of the zoning. And I know that zoning is really kind of a...
That's what we're doing here tonight. I think we probably have a marijuana facility from north here to the east here. That was my summer vacation, was I visited a lot of dispensaries. Yes, some people did some things very well, we have learned tremendously. We, somebody came to us pro bono, as a lawyer, who wrote the state, helped write the state law. If I were building a house, I would hire an architect. I am writing a law, therefore I hired a lawyer. We had more than one lawyer come to talk to us about this, and we incorporated all of their ideas. So when it's done, we just will get one person, we will get a lot of people, and we talked to a lot of people. But this is not done out of whole heart. Be assured of that.
And I, again, I appreciate that due diligence and in this brainstorming, but I have to worry about the source. I mean, it's equivalent to going to Toll Brothers and asking for their input on legality before they...
Karen? No, you don't need to worry about that. Don't worry about that. You don't need to worry about that. Trust us. You don't need to worry about that.
I just want to say, in addition to the pro bono attorney, we looked at other bylaws, and we happened to pick Marshfield and Rockland, who we modeled after as well, because they're our neighboring communities. I talked to town council yesterday, and I said there was concern that we hired a, we didn't hire, because we didn't pay them, a pro bono attorney, and she said, "You go to an expert when you're writing a bylaw." And that's exactly what we've done, we've gone to an expert, and we have put, he suggested things, and we said no, because we knew that the town of Situate, it wasn't right for the town of Situate. So we had a lot of input into this bylaw, and tonight is about getting more input, because we have, we have time to change it before it actually goes to town meeting. We have up until the warrant, we have up until town meeting floor to change it. But we'd like to do any major changes prior to the warrant being printed. So we would welcome written comments, but we put a lot of work into researching different bylaws.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to do that.
Yes. Not to worry.
Well, I think, you know, what we've given you, it's always the hardest thing to throw out, the first straw man, right? And that's what we've given you. And we, as Karen said, we've spent a lot of time trying to due diligence that, trying to get sort of balanced input on it. And I think, once you get a chance to read through it and all of that, if you have comments, we would love to hear them. And if you think it's all wrong, we'd love to hear that, too.
All right, Mia.
Mary Jenkins, Sunset Road. I would like to see children's playgrounds, skate parks, things like that, added to the suggestions, and so it's not part of the state. I'd also like to see it go to 500 feet.
Okay.
Go to the maximum. We can always drop it. Those are mine.
Thank you. Mia.
Tracy Cudding, 389 Country Way in Situate. With all respect to you and to Mr. Sanders, we were given that this isn't about marijuana use and told not to talk about that. He just made his pitch for marijuana. That is not a double-sided, that that's just not a fair standard. So, you know, what it appears then is that we have a citizens' petition that seems to be taking more precedent over the Situate ban that we all voted on as a town. And it seems to be weighted more to that. He's telling us it's coming no matter what, and you just entertained his viewpoints on marijuana around children and around all that. We're not arguing marijuana use. I'm not arguing that. I'm arguing as a citizen of Situate that I don't necessarily think that this is a fair presentation. In one of the things that you read, you said you would be using the extra money, because I think at the end of the day, this comes down to money. We're going to use a small, and it's a small amount of money, we're not weighing out the cost, but you're going to use the money to help youth addiction programs. That seems contradictory to get money from an industry that is involved in addictions to prevent or help us get our kids off addictions.
But that's exactly what it does. That is exactly what it does. It is contradictory, it sounds, and that is exactly what it does.
Right, and that's, but I'm just saying, that's a contradiction that, you know, we might be creating a mess of problems for our youth, for our citizens, yet, don't worry guys, because the money that we generate from it, we're going to use to help clean the mess. Like, that seems counterintuitive to me, to allow a mess to be made in the first place, but don't worry, because we're getting enough money to fix it, and there's no guarantee that that money is not going to be diverted down the line to other issues.
No, there absolutely is. In a town where this was being taken from 3% for their host community, the woman who owned the marijuana shop went to the board and said, "You're using my money wrong, therefore I'm giving it to you anyway." Therefore, I'm giving it to you anyway. And they went to the state and they won that. So no money that will be used for anything to do with addiction has to be used for that. That is very clear to cannabis commission. The other issue I think that you need to talk about is you keep talking about children. There are no children allowed in cannabis commissions.
And I'm not talking about children. He talked about children.
He's entitled to say what he wants to say.
I'm just talking about the line that you said. It would help, the money we're raising would help to support children and youth programs that are people who are addicted. I'm just commenting on that. And that seems kind of crazy to me. And you know what? In the other, in the other zoning issue that you just had, you all showed an interest for the residents and the, and the people who are living in that neighborhood, of that woman who's building that big garage. I don't feel like we as citizens, as neighbors, have been shown the same consideration on what is good for our town.
Sharon, we put up the zoning where these should go. We did not put those.
The map?
The maps up.
Karen, did you want to say something?
You have a lot of questions.
Yeah, why don't we just keep getting input and then, you know, we're going to get all kinds.
I don't know. That's up to the business.
Is it cash business?
It is, but that's not the subject.
Can we, can we keep on task here?
It's something for the bylaw because with regards to the, the money issue, raising money for the town, there'd have to be a pretty stringent way to keep tabs on the receipts of the business if it was a cash warning business.
The host agreement can be used towards education. It can be used for, for safety. It can be used for anything that's related to a marijuana establishment. So it's not just education. It could be used by police, policing, et cetera.
No, I'm just talking about, as far as tracking sales of a cash warning business.
And Bob, a good part of this is done on Venmo, just so you know.
All right, all right, all right, all right. All right, other questions, please?
Sure, yeah, Christina and I, Bradford app. And the document, the proposed bylaws had like seven different types of cannabis businesses, which retail is the only one that we get this excise tax money into the Situate coffers. The other six don't. Those two that, that just advisory slash retail, we're putting a limit on. And we're limiting it related to the alcohol sales or something. But there are no limit on the other ones. I mean, I can sort of see, Situate, I moved here because it's a beautiful farming and fishing community. But I think the farms could get eaten up by, we don't limit the number of farms that.
The number of establishments is two.
Two, I have a retail, but why don't we limit it?
It's all kinds, everything is under one establishment. It's one where they cover all of them. Sorry for the disaster.
And they're only allowed two, they're only allowed two total.
Of any pot of marijuana.
And one is retail.
All the same.
So we can't have a delivery company then, too. It's really, it's, Brett, Brett's more confused. Brett's like, there, we're only going to limit retail, and the others can just go on. We can have ten delivery companies and trucks and all of them. My last comment is, the other reason I moved here is because it really is a company, a town that cares about citizens. We're a facts community. We're not a cannabis community.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Mike Cheverry, 26 Minute Light App. I just wanted to reiterate and support, first of all, as a resident here of Situate, to draw up our own plan, not relying on Massachusetts or some of these other places. Although I do think it's fantastic that due diligence was done in looking at Marshfield and Rockland. I would very much encourage the board to include children gathering areas, you know, as playgrounds and recreational areas. And also very much impress on you that to raise it from four hundred to five hundred at a minimum.
Thank you.
And somebody on the line is staying here?
Yep, hold on.
No, I don't want.
Mr. Boucherey.
Good evening again. I just wanted to, sort of echo the comments of Biniani. And I think there's some confusion or disinformation going on. I don't believe it. I'd encourage the planning board member to correct me if I'm mistaken. This isn't the planning board seeking to change or advance the ability of a marijuana dispensary or growing facility to exist in town. This is the planning board recognizing that there is a possibility, whether or not that would be a good eventuality or a bad eventuality, and really the topic of this hearing. But there is a possibility that the state has legalized these facilities, that the town moratorium ends, either by vote of the town or by virtue of a ruling from state government. And that if the town is not prepared and has a fully grounded out bylaw limiting where and how these facilities can exist, there is a greater opportunity for these facilities to exist where we rather than not be and operate in a manner that we rather than not have. The planning board is seeking to limit the location and type of operation of these facilities in the event the town is forced to accept them, either by its citizens or by the state. And I worry that some of the same people that are upset with the planning board now, were thinking about this in advance, would hold the planning board accountable if it came to pass that the town was forced to accept these facilities and the planning board hadn't done this in advance.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's why we're doing it. That's why we're doing this. One, you've got two minutes.
I'll speak faster. I appreciate that, and I, the zoning board chair is interpreting the situation the way many people are, which I was trying to explain before, and clearly I did not do it correctly. There was a temporary moratorium in 2017 that passed at town meeting. Before the temporary moratorium expired, the process that is being now proposed for April was proposed by the Select Board of Situate. 2018 town meeting, a general bylaw ban on everything but medical, and a zoning bylaw prohibition on everything but medical. Those are not temporary. The state cannot make municipalities undo those. Only municipalities can do those. So we are not preparing, the planning board is not preparing some nice documents with community input and best practices included in meeting them in form for someday, for another citizens petition to come forward. The planning board, love you, and I can't believe what you guys do at all these meetings. It's so complicated and extremely interesting, but I defer to some as well. I value that. But this is actually the planning board ready for a general bylaw change and zoning board changes. And I get that the citizens will get to vote on those, but no one, the citizens have not asked you to do that. So it is not expiring. The state cannot make us change our zoning. We get to do our own zoning based on the state law from 2016. So being an OTOM, you have that ability. We've done it twice. We've have to do it three times. So maybe we'll be doing it again, but it is not accurate by this way.
But we were asked by citizens petition to take this on. So that is, we were asked.
Yes, either the citizens petition that's right to town meeting.
Oh, this is not a citizens petition. It went away. They hold it.
With the agreement that we would work with them to do, to craft the bylaw instead of just taking a citizens petition to town meeting and have it kind of be like a lawless, and, you know, having something.
The citizens could be doing it on.
We can, we can start, you know, putting in some, some gates and if, if the citizens of the town law passes at town meeting, at least there are, you know, a left and right limit of, you know.
And I'm sure we'll get there. I appreciate that there's, you know, consent, written comments, but it's.
But to a citizens petition, you would not have that ability to do. So that's why.
That's true. Yep.
So that's why we took this on.
Well, we did. There were actually public meetings. I came to them. They were there.
We are being proactive here. Very proactive.
Possibly too proactive.
That's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have another.
Yes.
Hold on.
On line?
Oh, hi.
Who?
Ms. Heim.
Yes, Ms. Heim. Mr. Heim?
Whomever?
Yes, hi, this is Caroline Heim.
Hi.
Let's see if I can, oh, sorry, you can't remember. No, you're good. We see you.
We see you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, this is Caroline Heim, 69 Hollis Street, Situate. And my comment, I guess, is a little bit similar to the most recent two comments in that the sense that I think is being put forward by having these planning meetings, like you said, almost planning too well, is that I think it's giving a sense to the community that this is a done deal. This is something that's happening already. We're doing the preparation. Please let me speak.
Yes.
We're doing the preparation, and as it becomes more and more publicized, social media, community, discussion, it will become an accepted thing. It is, it's really a psychological thing. So I'm curious, because I believe something like this, you know, the comments, two comments ago by the gentleman, also on camera, he had stated that we're preparing. Should we be forced? Well, I believe we could put something forward, and this is probably what Anne Marie was just saying as well, that we could put something forward that, should that come, come to be, we have the time and the ability to plan as needed at that time. I'm a preparer. I love the preparation. But I do feel something like this is really forcing the hand and making it seem like it's a done deal. Thank you.
Your interpretation. Thank you.
I respectfully disagree, but that's fine. Mia.
Can I just add that, you know, we said, you know, we talked about this is all preparatory so that we have and we're prepared for when this comes. But I think we're going to put it in a desk in the second it's done. How long do you think it will be before something comes forward? It's not, it's not, that's where it feels like a done deal. Like, the citizen is just waiting for this to be put in, and then it's, it's opening it all up. I mean, it's not that we're just getting ahead of it. By getting ahead of it, we're preparing a pathway, in a road, for the citizens petition to pass. So really, our only defense is to knock this down on April 11th and to mobilize the town and that makes division in our town. And that's unfortunate. But you put this in a drawer, I think it lasts a week before.
Let me explain this to you. We are not here to propose a cannabis dispensary for the town of Situate. That is not what we are here to do. That, that happens to be what the legal land use is for, is neither here nor there. We are here, as Mr. Turey said, and we are being very, very proactive. And if it went, this ever went before a citizens petition, you would be all over us as to why we need to get ahead of this before and put limits on this. Right now, we can tell you, you can go in two or three places, and that is it. Very controlled, how big it is, how much it can endure, how long it's there, how much it's probably is. Without the planning board, you have none of that. So this is really in your very best interest to listen to what we have to say. And we are not trying to push anything down your throat. It is up to you at town meeting to come. We all sit here and say, we're running a bylaw that may not pass, and that's fine. But we're doing our job. So.
So we're running a bylaw that will be on the warrant for town meeting. There'll be also the, another article on town meeting. The zoning article will come first. So that if that passes, great, we have some zoning for illegal use. After that will come the article on removing the ban. That may or may not pass. It's up to the citizens of the town of Situate. So the things will be presented in a logical order that the citizens of the town of Situate will get to come and express their points of view. So it'll all be on the warrant, but this is just the precursor. This public meeting, because we have been working on the zoning bylaw. We started as soon as the citizens petition referred it to the planning board. We will have a zoning public hearing, which we're required to by state law to enact any zoning. We have to, the planning board has to make a recommendation to town meeting. The Select Board also makes a recommendation. And the advisory committee also makes a recommendation. And it's not just one article. We're talking about it all as if it's one article right now. But it'll be multiple articles, all in an order, that the citizens will have the input, what is the final result.
All right, sir.
Hi, I'm Father Matthew Conley. I'm Pastor St. Mary's, 10th Street. First question is, has the board been this actively involved with the citizens petition before? Is this the first time that you have actively taken a citizens petition and then, and then took it upon yourself to create something for that specific?
The Ellis State is a citizens petition. So I was involved in the Ellis State, and that is a citizens petition.
But to this extent, you've been this involved?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So the second question is.
My not only to the general, that's how, that's how we are very involved in this.
Okay, so the second question I have, I think that this, you have to take logic and emotion. You have to separate them here. When it comes to, just because something is legal doesn't mean it's right, first of all. Also, when it comes to the children, my worry isn't, isn't about the children. These establishments are not going to affect the children, but it is going to affect them as, when they're older. Because I think that personally, having these establishments, I worked in prison ministry. Most of the prison inmates I worked with, they started as young eighteen-year-olds with marijuana. And bringing these into our town will create a problem. Whereas instead of reaching out to something that is good, they reach out to something that is easy. And I think this sets us up for a tremendously difficult situation with working with people who have substance abuse and substance issues, including marijuana. It can become an issue. People say it's not addictive. I don't care if it's addictive. It's a problem, and it can become a problem. And so my question at this point for you is, can somebody address, I've been told, and I would like to know, I'd like to know, is there somebody on this board who is actively involved or who owns dispensaries? Because I've been told that somebody on the board is directly involved with dispensaries somewhere, elsewhere, or who has a direct interest in this.
Not on any of us.
Clarify.
Not on the planning board.
Okay, and is the advisory board working with you?
No, no, not at all.
They haven't done anything? So what is their role?
They're going to read our bylaw. They're going to recommend it or not, support it or not support it. That's all.
The advisory committee makes recommendations to the populace at town meeting.
On all the articles, every article that goes before town meeting, the advisory committee makes a recommendation, not just zoning, every article.
So there's somebody on that board who's going to recommend this that is pro cannabis?
He will refuse himself.
But is he still involved in the conversation? He can refuse from the vote, but can he be involved part of the conversation?
Well, you should, you should go ask them that.
Ask them. That's not a question.
But do you know that answer?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gillis.
I was just going to say, I think as a member of the public, if he recuses himself on the board and he has an interest, he could speak as a public citizen like anybody else. But that doesn't mean that the advisory board is going to vote in favor or against.
That's right.
Right. And we have no idea what their connections are, so should ask them.
All right, I'm going to take two more questions.
Do you also have two?
All right, two on, on, Mr. Saunders, you've already spoken.
Yeah, we should get other people.
We have to get other people. Nope, sorry.
Hi, let me see if I can get my video here working. Hi, I'm Fraysh Legel, nine West Cleveland. I support marijuana, but I also hear, you know, I'm a parent. I have children. And I hear a lot of fear in this room about.
Could I interrupt you just for a second? We are not discussing cannabis. Unfortunately, I know that that's what you want to talk about. That's not what we are discussing tonight. And I know we stand on this, but our position is to talk about the land use.
Right, so about the zoning.
The zoning.
It's all about zoning.
I, okay, I think the zoning is north of Twin Green Bush. It's four hundred feet door to door. It makes a lot of sense to me that the town would go ahead and make these laws in case it does pass the town meeting. Even if it passes the town meeting, somebody needs literally millions of dollars to set up a business here.
It's true. Thank you very much. That's.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bonjour, this is more a process question. We're bringing forward to the town this change to the bylaw. Should it fail? Does it automatically revert back to the language that's currently in the bylaw? Or should something be crafted for that, should it fail?
No, if it doesn't get approved, nothing changes.
There was a lot of redlining against what's currently in place.
There's nothing that, if it doesn't pass, nothing changes. End of story.
So that original language stays that we're in advance?
Yes, yes.
Will that be made, or does that need to be made clear to people? That they're not voting on this or nothing. There's, you don't vote on this and the old bylaw stays in place.
Karen?
The only bylaw that we have right now is a registered marijuana dispensary. So that's medical marijuana. So if that doesn't pass, if, if the changes don't pass, we are asking for changes to that to bring it up to current terminology. asking for changes to that, to bring it up to current terminology with the Cannabis Control Commission, and a few other changes, then that will stay the same.
There is a zoning ban on the books, that would stay.
If that doesn't, if, if the ban doesn't, if the citizens vote no on that, then that stays, that stays, that stays, yes.
All right, it's getting late. One more, one more.
Yeah, hold on.
Mm-hmm. April?
Hi, hold on. Hi, I'm, I'm in my car, because I'm in the network. April O'Connor, twenty-one Gilston Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you parked?
Are you parked?
My car, my car, my car, it's too loud in the restaurant. Yeah, so, my twenty-one Gilston Road, I was one of the people that helped collect the signatures. We have, you know, we did two petitions, one for zoning, and one for overturning the ban. And the zoning was too vague, so the town, when, you know, they got the lawyer, and we got everybody to put their heads together to come up with something that would be acceptable, should it pass. So, I'm hoping that people can understand that it's just about the zoning, and having something that would work for people. Whether or not, you know, it happens, it's up to the town. So, I'm just saying that, I, with all due respect to the planning board, I feel like you're shutting down people talking about cannabis, but you're not shutting down people talking about addiction. And it's already legal in the town, it's already legal in the state, it's just not legal to be sold in the town, like, you know, in a adult-use format. Medical is already legally sold, and nobody's done anything yet, and it's just, we're mixing up on one. Basically, we're looking at all these different things, looking at shutting down the wind turbine, all this stuff that's gonna cost the town money, and this is something that can bring revenue to the town. It already sits, because everybody can grow weed in the town, everybody can smoke in the town, so why not have some place to get a state access? And that's, that's really all this about. And it's not gonna stop people from doing it, they can get it, it's available. And they can go to the next town over again. So, it's really about money, and I really appreciate the town, and thanks to the planning board for helping us to come up with something that could work for the town, potentially, should the town citizens vote it into action. So, thank, thank you for your time, and thank you for this meeting today.
Thank you. All right, one more, and then we have to move on. Yes, sir, you've been very patient.
Thank you very much. Kevin Craywood, College Street, just trying to get some clarity. I've heard about the lawyer, who was engaged, consulted, someone said hired, I've heard pro bono. What exactly is the relationship of the lawyer? Has the town retained the lawyer for payment, and therefore imposing a fiduciary responsibility on him to the town?
No, absolutely not, he is...
So, he has a fiduciary responsibility to the town. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Mr. Joyce.
You have the last person.
Thank you. Joe Joyce, Thirty-Nine Ocean Ave. I just want to say, I appreciate this meeting tonight. I would like to share, I'd like more of them, because it's very confusing. I'm confused, and I've paid attention, listened. I know people are concerned, I recognize that. What I don't know is, we have a moratorium, yes. Can the state override that moratorium, just like a forty B can override something that could stop the town? I don't know that. I don't know if we can continue to have a moratorium and let people make that decision. I'm confused. And so, the first thing is, when someone said here that they, they can't stop the town from having a moratorium, okay, is that true? I don't know. So, after tonight's meeting, I'm confused. I appreciate this, I appreciate everybody's effort, but the foundation, I think would be helpful is, one, we have a moratorium. Two, that moratorium may get turned over for these reasons, because I'm confused. And if it gets turned over, what we're trying to do is institute limitations of where they can go. This is what I think is being said here. And so, I only want to say, we should start that foundation, because I can see there's suspicion of the board. I have no suspicion of the board. My observation is, you're trying to, you're trying to limit something that you're telling us is coming. But I don't know, can it be forced on us, or can we be told, you can't have a moratorium? I, I walked out of here tonight, I don't know that answer. So, that's something I think would be helpful to establish, because if you're at the town meeting, and they haven't heard any of this, they're not gonna know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you all very much.
Can we do a summary-type thing?
Okay.
So, what I'm hearing right now is, a lot of the people here are in favor of going to 500 feet.
Yes.
I'm hearing that the people here seem to be in favor of adding more restrictions on location.
And I first think, could we say 500 feet from, you know, like Marshfield and the state, property boundary, property boundary, not geometric center?
Could it be written that we say a thousand feet?
No.
Yes, it can, you can say a thousand.
Well, yes, if that's what we agree on, if we're gonna be putting one before the other, and we're gonna decide on the zoning issues, then why can't we have input in what we want on the zoning?
You can submit any comments.
But I'm just trying to summarize what I'm hearing right now. So, we have direction that we can discuss on where we want to go from here, and that you're looking for some information about the potential, can the state override the moratorium? So, those are, those are the basic questions, those are the basic things that I'm hearing tonight. And we are certainly willing to take your other comments, and ideally, you're gonna get them to us before the public hearing on February 10th, because then we can compile a list of comments received, and discuss them at the public hearing.
That sounds reasonable.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Stephen?
I just wanted to comment, at one point, Pat, I think you said that you had a map, I don't know if it was an overview or not, but as far as whether it's 500 feet or a thousand feet, I think it's probably most important for the people that are here to look at the map that they're choosing, and seeing what the difference is between 500 and 1,000. Because there may be no facilities that are affected within 1,000, you know, 500, whatever it is, but I think it's important for everybody to look and see what they've chosen already as areas to potentially have.
People would possibly cite this, yes.
That's very important, I think, for everybody. Whether it's 400 or 500 feet, if it doesn't affect anything, that doesn't make a difference.
Can the layman do that, or should we?
I'm basically asking the board if they would make that available to all you people, or are they against, either way, that they are.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your comments, we understand your concerns, and we are doing this really for the town of Situate. We don't benefit from this, but the town does. If we can get something in terms of land use in place, then we're ahead of the game. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more zoning article, section eight-ten slash, all right, entertain a motion to take a five-minute break.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye, we're done.
Come back in session.
Second, all in favor, aye. All right, good, we're done. Let's go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, board members. I've been working for a while now on section eight-ten of the zoning bylaws, trying to figure out how we could modify it so that it would solve a problem that the town has had for a long time, and doesn't really seem to be able to do anything about under these circumstances. Just in general, for the public, section eight-ten of the bylaw speaks to existing uses and structures, and says basically, if you have a structure that's pre-existing non-conforming, which a lot of houses, for example, in the, in the Sandhills District are, and a lot of houses all over town, we have a lot of situations like that, you can continue to use and enjoy and have value in that property, so long as you do not abandon or use it for a period of two years or more. If it is abandoned or not used, I'm quoting, for a period of two years or more, then, and it's, you know, it's sort of open-ended, then you can't. You know, what you can do is not specified, but what you can't do is, is start re, start using it again, or modify it, or whatever you'd like to do with it. It becomes very, very, sort of hazy here. There's another section, eight-thirty, repair and restoration of non-conforming structures and uses. Again, a non-conforming structure is any house that's on a lot under 10,000 square feet, with frontage of less than 100 square feet, 100 feet, and that doesn't have setbacks that match the present zoning bylaw. So, there's a lot of, a lot of those, and there's crossover between those two sections. In effect, what happens is, if a house is destroyed or abandoned, fire, storm damage, some sort of legal activity that renders that house, the owner unable to deal with the property, whatever, after a period of time, in the case of section eight-ten, it's two years, in the, in the case of eight-thirty, it's four years, but after a period of time, that property is essentially valueless, there's nothing you can do with it. I showed the board when I was in here previously, a couple of pictures of properties around town that fall into that category, that that's happened to. Clearly, it's a dangerous situation, it's an undesirable situation, the neighborhood is blighted by these properties, they have the potential of fire, vandalism, all kinds of things. And the other interesting thing is, in consultation with the town attorney, the principle of an uncompensated taking was discussed. And in effect, that's what's happened here. By adopting this bylaw, and in effect, making zoning changes that then made these particular structures non-conforming to present zoning, the town has engaged in an uncompensated taking. The owners of these properties no longer have any value, or very little value, in properties that previously might have been quite valuable. I'm thinking of the one on Surfside Road. The, you know, there's even a Supreme Court ruling on that exact subject, which I won't bore you with quoting, but the Justice Scalia wrote the majority opinion that, in fact, in a case like this, the statute authorizing the regulation, which is a zoning change in this case, was legitimate, but since it had taken away any hope of economic return to the owner of the property, that the, that the, the town still, still owed this person compensation. So, we've got, we've basically got an illegal situation existing here, which really needs to be rectified. And that's what I'm trying to do. What I think we can do easily is change some of the wording to make it more inclusive, that would be able to combine eight-ten, which is principally concerned with one- and two-family residences, and section eight-thirty, which is more broadly concerned with all sorts of buildings, residential and otherwise. There's no reason in my mind that both of those categories can't be treated essentially in the same way. So, what I've tried to do is change the new bylaw, or write the new bylaw, to capture all of the non-conforming structures. They would have to exist legally as of the effective date of the passage of this bylaw, this spring's town meeting, if it were to pass. And also group together non-conformities, whether they be dimensional, use-based, or both, and also group together the improvements that are contemplated, whether they're repair, reconstruction, or otherwise, and also group together the causes of the damage or abandonment that require the, the repair or reconstruction. So, whether it was storm or other damage, deterioration, or simply the desire to change, add space, whatever, it would all come under one category. Starting with eight-ten, I made a change that would read, in the first sentence, the existing language is "any lawful structure or lawful use of land or structure existing." As of the effective date of this bylaw, I would like to insert "in whole or in substantial part." The intention of that change is to capture a building that is partially, or even mostly, destroyed by fire or flood, storm damage, that kind of thing, but not to include the category of, of sort of remaining buildings, for instance, that you can see at low tide on Peggy Beach, where a townway used to exist with, you know, a complete neighborhood, which is now gone. Certainly, you don't, it's not desirable to have those become part of the, you know, to put those in play. That's, that's absolutely not, not the intent of the bylaw. Then, the existing bylaw language goes on to say, "Any construction or operation for which a building permit has been issued prior to the effective date of this bylaw, or any amendment thereto, may be continued." I wish to insert in that sentence, "In which a building or other permit has been issued." In other words, it could be a special permit by the planning board, it could be a special permit by the zoning board of appeals, could even be an order of conditions, in my mind, at least, by the conservation commission, but it's some official permission for this project to go forward. So, "can be continued, although not in conformity with the provisions thereof," meaning that non-conformity that existed prior to this event can be continued after, afterwards, unless or until abandoned or not used for a period. It now says two years, I would propose to change the two years to four years. I think that covers more adequately the possibility of, for example, a drawn-out probate action, a drawn-out divorce proceeding, military duties that keep somebody overseas for a period of time. So, the state statute that speaks to this talks about two years as being a minimum amount of time, but you can go beyond two years at, at your discretion. So, I believe four years would be a little more in keeping, and four years is also a number that's used in section eight-thirty, which, as I said, I'm trying to roll into this newer, new rewrite of section eight-ten. And then, here's the key phrase to that, to that sentence, add the following, "Except that this time limit may be waived for good cause by the zoning board of appeals, by means of a special permit and/or finding." That basically takes the, the, the time limit that's, that's fixed and immutable off the table, and allows the zoning board of appeals to look at this on a case-by-case basis, and decide that even though a structure has been abandoned or not used for a period of longer than the four years now that we're talking about, it can still be brought back to life, so to speak, in one way or another, with a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. That would allow that the blighted structures that are now, and fortunately, there aren't lots and lots of them, there are several, but those blighted structures would, which now have no value, and really, if we do nothing, are gonna sit there forever, until they completely fall down, or, or somebody comes and burns them, or whatever. It won't be a good, won't be a good result, for sure. At any rate, it would allow those structures to be sold for market value, demolished, and a new structure built on the site, or the structures themselves rehabilitated, whatever seems best, but at least they seems best, but at least they would have value, they would be brought back to, to good condition. I mean, with the state of the, the real estate market in situ, it's hard to believe that, you know, that kind of an opportunity wouldn't be jumped on very quickly. So-
Brought back in?
Yeah.
Good condition?
Yeah.
Nonconforming?
Exactly, yeah. They would still remain nonconforming. So the other part of that is to make sure that we have some protection against the continuation of nonconforming structures that's a little bit stiffer, if you will, than that applied to single-family dwellings or structures that do conform by use. This is most, this is really by use, as opposed to by setback or lot size, but by use to the zone in which they're in. So I would include some language that says, in this case, "Modifications to structures or uses of land or structure lawfully existing as of the effective date of this bylaw shall be governed by the following subsections, with the further provisions that no nonconforming use, once abandoned or not used for a period of four years or more, shall be allowed to be restored as a nonconforming use." So that's new language. And that existing language, which is already in the bylaw, says, "And no nonconforming use, if changed to a conforming use, shall revert to a nonconforming use."
Okay.
So that all phrase, that whole phrase reads as follows: "Except that this time limit may be waived for good cause by the zoning board of appeals by means of a special permit and/or finding. Modifications to structures or uses of land or structure lawfully existing as of the effective date of this bylaw shall be governed by the following subsections," and I'll go over those subsections, "with the further provisions that no nonconforming use, once abandoned or not used for a period of four years or more, shall be allowed to be restored as a nonconforming use. And no nonconforming use, if changed to a conforming use, shall revert." What I'm trying to do there is at least hold out a potential cure for situations like the Egypt garage. So even if, you know, this bylaw allowed that building to be restored, it couldn't be restored as a, as a garage or, or a service station. Would have to be probably, in that case, taken down and a home built on the property because that's what it's known for. But that's the intent of that, that phrase. Then the existing eight ten goes on to talk about alteration of single and two-family nonconforming structures. That would change, in this case, to single and two-family nonconforming structures being changed to simply structures, so that it would incorporate all uses and all structures, not just, not just dwellings. And to change that, to make it match, you just go through the eight ten two A and B and change single and two-family structures to simply the word "structure." Then there's a third paragraph here, which I would propose to make eight ten point two C. I realize this is a little hard to follow, and I'll be happy to sort of take it bit by bit for any questions, but adding paragraph C is basically adding back in the portions of eight ten point three, which are necessary to the intent of the amended eight ten point two. And so there'd be A, B, and now C, C reading in all other instances, "Of alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change, the applicant may petition the board of appeals for a finding under general laws, chapter forty A, section six, to allow the proposed repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change, which the board may grant if the board finds the proposed repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. The repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change of such nonconforming structure so as to increase an existing nonconformity or create a new nonconformity, including the extension of an exterior wall at or along the same nonconforming distance within a required yard setback, shall require the issuance of a variance from the board of appeals." That language is a direct quote from the existing section eight ten point three, so if it's wordy and repetitive, please don't blame me. But that, that is a direct quote, so that applies as well here and would be, would be included in the new subsection C of eight, eight ten point two. So that's the proposal, to create basically a single bylaw section eight ten, which combines the existing eight ten with eight thirty, and allows a path forward for situations such as this one, and I showed this to the board. And if anyone who's listening is familiar with the Surfside Road neighborhood, this is eighty-one Surfside Road. I bring it up because it's bank-owned, and so therefore, there's no, you know, personal connection to it. It's institutionalized at this point, but that, that building has been there for at least twenty-five years in that condition, and has not and cannot be rehabilitated. Photograph doesn't show it, but the back of that building is entirely plywooded, where it's been breached by the ocean on at least two occasions. The town has had to come in and pay for boarding up the building to make it at least reasonably safe and secure. And that's the kind of thing we're, we're trying to prevent. That, that building and its location, if it were able to be rehabilitated, or if it were to be taken down and a new home built there, would be very valuable and would not last on the market, you know, a week. And then there'd be a nice new house there, gracing the neighborhood instead of, instead of blighting the neighborhood. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to accomplish.
I have to leave.
Oh, good. Good for you. Technology's miraculous, really. So, yeah, that's, that's an extreme situation, but there are other, other properties in town which are similar, and in a similar situation.
All right. Comments from the board?
I have a bunch of questions. We sort of went through this last time, I'm not sure I, I got an answer, but how many structures have we talked about?
I know of maybe four. I'll bet there's a dozen I don't know of, but it's not a lot.
And just looking at your picture there, and I get it, somebody could build a nice little house right in harm's way, right? So the question is, do we want to encourage that to happen again? And would this do that?
Certainly, any home, any house that was built there would have to meet FEMA flood requirements. It's in a velocity zone. And so it would be elevated on pilings to two feet above the base flood elevation in the velocity zone. Is it a good thing to encourage development that close to the ocean? In general, I'd say not. However we do it, through FEMA grants, among other, other ways.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm really thinking about kind of how we've been through a fairly lengthy process on the master plan and indicated that this is something we're trying to do more of, is to integrate those objectives out of the master plan, which includes how do we, how do we address, you know, climate change issues?
Right, how do we retreat?
And have a house that nobody's lived in for twenty-five years and is, is the best sort of policy of the town to encourage it to be rebuilt or not be rebuilt in, in that particular location? That's just one, and I, I get it that each garage might be different than that, right?
That's the only one I know of that's right.
Sort of reading the question.
Two I know right along the shore. Yeah, it's a good question, there's no, there's no-
I mean, the best thing for that may be just to tear it down and not build it, and not put down infrastructure into it and all of that.
In which case, the town would have to bear the cost of tearing it down. I, I agree with you in general, Steve. I really do.
Might be a good investment for the town, as opposed to, you know, one, one company later.
Mr. Kary, let's start this.
It's just a, it's really more sort of a philosophical question here because-
Yeah.
We've just spent a lot of time talking in this board's election about how do we implement the, the objectives of the master plan and how to integrate those into our sort of day-to-day business, if you will.
We have the chairman of the-
Zoning board.
Zoning board, who would like to speak. Hello again.
Hello again.
Hello, Anthony.
Hi, Bob. And Bob, thank you, the zoning board, for your work to put this forth. You know, I, I give a lot of weight to something that you think is better for the town and better for the code, since you're the person that we tasked with enforcing it. To some of the questions that were raised by the member of the planning board just a moment ago, I would like to clarify that this code, this amendment to the code, would, would not seek to make any unbuildable lot buildable from scratch. The, the objective here is a lot that was built on, that some form of a building has, still exists on, could become something other than a partially-built lot within a neighborhood or within a town. I would argue that short of, you know, you made the suggestion that, that town bearing the expense of knocking down an existing structure would, might be in the town's best interest, rather than allowing that structure to be built into FEMA compliance, which I think is a tough argument to maintain, especially given the tax revenue that would come to the town. Now, I think certainly the neighbors, if we're by the ocean, might agree with you because they would get to preserve their, their view, but then we get into what Bob mentioned, if the town pursues that scenario where we are essentially taking actions to take land from owners, and I think it's important to keep in mind that in order for a lot to qualify for this section of the bylaw as revised, taxes would have had to continue to be paid, otherwise, there would have been a tax taking, and the applicant wouldn't be in a position to apply for a building permit.
Good point.
But if those taxes were paid current, and I, I think the last important part of this year, and what would be the subject of my board, so long as I'm on it, is that we would have to determine that allowing that pre-existing nonconforming structure to be rebuilt would not be more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood than it exists on the date of the application. And, and that's really the, the impetus here for, for Bob's changes to the bylaw. It's his opinion, and an opinion that I share, that are, that there are instances in town where there are structures that have arguably been abandoned for more than two years, where the town and the surrounding neighborhood would be better served if those structures were allowed to be rebuilt into habitable homes that complied with all building code, complied with FEMA regulations, and became contributing parts of the neighborhood and the tax base going forward, that the surrounding neighborhood would be better off than allowing those undeveloped or sometimes entirely uninhabitable homes or structures to continue to exist in their present state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you've worked hard on this, and you've been a couple of years. Good work.
And so, if I could just ask a few more questions here. So any, any land or structure existing in whole or substantial part as of the effective date? How do we know what that is? I mean, you gave the example of, there's no chance that a legal interpretation of this could bring those back?
I, I'm not an attorney.
Here he is.
Anthony might be able to speak to that better. He is an attorney. However, the operation of this would be, that decision would be made by the zoning board as part of the special permit process.
No, I get that. I'm just saying, you know, what qualifies, and are we, are we sure we're not creating untamed consequences here?
I'm unable to answer that question because I think, I think it's a judgment call, no matter who makes it, and it makes a, it's, it's a point, it's a point which could be argued. However, the zoning board has the power to determine whether or not they consider a particular situation to qualify for relief. And as always, if the applicant does not agree with the zoning board's decision, then the appeal is to the Supreme Judicial Court. And it would go the same way as any other, I'm sorry, land court, yes, Superior Court. So it would go the way of any other appeal.
Right. I'm just trying to make sure we don't have that process involved.
Well, no, I, I get that.
If it doesn't qualify, then there is no legal standing.
I, I, believe me, I thought about that a lot, and I couldn't come up with a way to define precisely and irrevocably what would qualify and what would not. And if someone could come up with that, I would welcome it.
Anthony?
Just to speak to that, I mean, I think the, the bylaw as an amendment that Bob had drafted, give the zoning board the power to make that determination, I think they're the right board to make that determination, and, and I think common sense is the barometer there. The particular moment, I'm getting the address now that Bob put up, a picture of, that's a home that is unsafe currently, has gone unrepaired, exists, and is not in FEMA compliance. And the surrounding neighborhood, I don't know all the particulars of that, hey, I'd have heard you would have stamped for me, but I would imagine that the surrounding neighborhood would be better off if that home, in a state of disrepair and a lack of safety, was brought into FEMA compliance and was well-maintained by a property owner that was going to take care of it. If that home, instead of being that home that exists today, was a few field stones of what used to be a foundation, that's not existing in whole or in substantial part. And I think it would be hard to argue that the surrounding neighborhood would be better off if, instead of those eight field stones that used to be a foundation forty years ago, there was a three-story home. So I, I think that in whole or substantial part, in the case law, which requires a special permit to be granted if there's no detriment to the surrounding neighborhood, are these common sense and legal parameters that, that make this bylaw drafted work?
So the substantial part is the thing that's important here? Because obviously whole, we want that, but-
Certainly.
And so it would be considered fifty percent or more?
No, I, I think we could look at it in a mentality and circumstances, as for instance, if we have a major hurricane followed by a great recession, as we did going into two thousand and eighty-nine, and it takes someone thirty months to get their active financing together to repair their home, which was fifty-one percent destroyed, and they came before me for a special permit, I don't think I would, I would rule strictly that, oh, no, your, your home was fifty-one percent destroyed, so you shouldn't be able to repair it. Looking at it in the mentality and circumstances, I think in that instance, I would employ Bob's draft bylaw drafted, to say that, no, this wasn't abandoned, and this can be repaired. I think that there are- I think that there are other instances where if a, a home was easily torn down and the town wanted to, and it was abandoned for a number of years, and even though seventy percent of it was still arguably in existence, maybe we wouldn't grant a special permit in that instance. I, I think this allows the town the flexibility to remove blighted structures, whether the structure is a little bit or a lot of a home, I think gives the town that discretion to have them repaired, rather than having a portion of a home on a lot where the lot isn't open space benefiting the town or the neighborhood, but the lot also isn't a home that properly maintains benefiting the town.
And because the, the definitions are a little bit broader, there isn't a hard and fast rule of two years and it's gone, or anything like that, you can go in front of the zoning board, um...
Well, this says four years.
Or four years, sorry, uh, to get an extension. That also, because we're leaving, uh, the definitions of abandoned or, you know, how much of the structure is built, a little bit more broad, we are still giving the property owners the protection of they get to address and work on getting a, you know, or, you know, appeal to the zoning board appeals to get a, an extension to that, if they have intent for...
No, I get that. I think, I think the way it was written before was intended to be a motivation to get it done before too long, not wait twenty-six years, right? So, I, I think we're sort of playing that double-edged sword here right now.
Well, there's no question. Now, I'll talk to the person who had a hand in writing it.
But also, that's something that, so when they go up to get the extension from the zoning board of appeals, and zoning board of appeals could put potentially stipulations on, okay, you want, you know, you're going through like a long probate or a bad divorce or something like that, like, we're going to address this in a year, or, hey, we, we need to see X amount of progress within two years or three years. So, there's, there's a way forward. It's not just, okay, we'll see you in four years type of thing, but leaving it to their discretion and the owners then working it out. I think having this more broadly written is, is good. Then the zoning board of appeals can say, hey, you guys have had fifteen years of, you know, just having this property here and keep on stringing this along, like, this is it, you know, I'm here to make some progress. However, however, they need to do it for their specific needs.
Yeah, I think more typically, go ahead.
We, we could arguably raise more conditions than that. If a, if a property was dilapidated or partially destroyed for a period of time, we could say, well, I, I think it's in the interest of the town and the neighborhood to have this property repaired, repaired, but maybe the house that gets rebuilt here should be this much smaller, or maybe we should remove this particular nonconformity as part of that reconstruction. I mean, there, the ability is there for the board with any application to put whatever conditions they would like on the granting of a special permit.
Stephen.
Okay, if I can, through the chair, I'd like to ask a question of, of Anthony. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot.
I suppose that's the same.
Because my belief in what is written is going to make it so that, Anthony, if you had a house and it was nonconforming and it burned, say seventy-five percent, and you decided to let that house sit there for twenty years, okay? You, you're basically saying it would be good for the neighborhood to allow Anthony to rebuild this house. But Anthony, if you took that house down when it burned and had a vacant lot there, do you think that you should lose your rights under this bylaw to put that house back after a certain amount of time? Or do you believe that you should be able to rebuild that house because you did what the town asked and you made the neighborhood a nice place? Because this promotes people from leaving dilapidated structures until they're ready, and that could be fifty years down the road because you're taking away the time limit. Or should everybody, if their structure is lost, have the right to come to the zoning board of appeals and ask for a special permit to put back a structure, whether it presently exists or whether it existed in the town of Sittiwat, and you still can provide all the protections that you need for the neighbors in granting that special permit? What's your opinion on that?
From Mr. Burek, if I understand your question directly, you are agreeing with these changes, but you feel that they don't go far enough. Is that correct?
My belief is that if somebody had an, had a structure, a single-family home in the town of Sittiwat, and that home was destroyed, okay, then they should be able to come to the zoning board of appeals and ask for permission to rebuild that regardless of the time limit. We have tried for years and years to get rid of the time limit to rebuild a single-family home. There is a particular site, some members are aware of it, that a gentleman named Ed Locke owned at 141 Turner Road, and after a storm event, he inherited the house from his mother. It was a summer home, so they didn't live in Sittiwat. The town asked them to either secure the building because it still was there, or take the building down. And he was assured that he could rebuild when he came back. He waited five years, didn't have the money to rebuild, came back five years later and was denied the right to rebuild the structure. But my point is, don't you feel that if a structure is burnt for forty years or fifty years and left there, that this would then give that person the ability to come back and ask for a special permit? But somebody that actually claimed to sign up would not be able to come back? Does that make any sense?
I think that, Doc, you have a valid argument, going a bit outside the question that's being put before the planning board and before me tonight. I think you are raising another concern about particulars of our code, which may be valid. I, uh, I think that the code that Bob proposed is a step towards closing the concern and issue that you're raising, rather than a step towards making it worse?
They have the ability right now to close the door and just do away with the timeframe and allow people to come to your board and ask for relief.
I understand. So, you're, you are suggesting that there shouldn't be any cap on the time limit?
There is no cap. They're not closing a cap.
No, I think the suggestion is that the existing in whole...
There is a cap for rebuilding a nonconforming.
Existing in whole or substantial part is the phrase that Steve would like to strike. In other words, if there's nothing there at all, but it can be proved that once there was a house on that property, that's the situation Steve would like to have included in this, in this...
I think that's going way over what Bob started to try to address.
To take it a step forward, Bob referred to a Supreme Court case, and, and I know you're an attorney, I am not, um, but I, they're generally referred to as land-taking cases. Have you ever heard of a case called a building-taking case? Because if a structure is, is dilapidated, the value is not in the structure. The value is in the land that's there, being able to put a structure back. So, I haven't heard of anybody ever having a building-taking case. So, what we're really trying to do is protect the land value, not the building value, so that there won't be taking. And I would, I would challenge the town to find more than maybe one or two sites that would be able to reconstruct if they just wiped the time limit out. And for your information, before nineteen seventy-eight, everybody had a right to rebuild. After nineteen seventy-eight, there was a timeframe that the town granted permits for everybody to be able to rebuild, and it wasn't until somewhere around nineteen eighty-three or four, I think, that Thomas Hastings, I believe, was the first one that was not able to rebuild a home that he had got from his grandfather. That lot has since been added to the lot next door and does not have the ability to be rebuilt because it's now a combined lot. So, there is only one lot that I know of in the town of Sittiwat that is being discriminated against by not being able to rebuild, while everybody else, past, present, and future, will have the ability to come to the zoning board to act, to ask for relief.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does a person have it anywhere in writing that it said, yes, you can rebuild in a certain time period?
They might have to go back... No, it doesn't say in a certain timeframe, no.
No, no, but I mean, you, you take this building down...
They took, yes.
And then you can rebuild it a later day.
Yes, yeah. The building inspector told them that, but they came back five years later and they were denied the right at, by the zoning board of appeals at the time, not Anthony because he was probably in diapers back then. Uh, it was a long, long time ago.
How long?
It was nineteen, uh, it was five years after, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-five, they were denied the right.
And, and was there an appeal filed?
I, I deny it all.
Is that in writing?
Are we trying to address the one year?
Whether, whether that's in writing or not in writing is not the issue. The issue is there, it was a buildable lot in town that had a structure, and that this bylaw, being proposed as it is, would it not allow somebody to leave a structure for twenty years dilapidated and then ask the zoning board for relief? That's the question. Would they do that? Either Bob or Anthony or any board member, please answer, if I leave it a disgrace in the town, can I ask for permission to rebuild it under this bylaw as proposed?
I don't know.
As a conforming use, yes.
Just can they go to the zoning board and ask for relief?
As a conforming use, yes.
So, it promotes leaving a dilapidated structure because if that person took it down...
No, Steve.
So, if the person took it down, could they come back in five years and ask to put it back?
No.
As a conforming structure.
There you go. So, if you leave it there, you can ask for permission to rebuild.
Surely good, so it can buy a old conforming structure there.
No. This is a three thousand square foot lot sticking.
Talk about any other site in town. The, the one that Bob's just talking about there. If that structure was wiped out, okay, and gone, they wouldn't have the right to come back in again. On Holly Road is a burned house.
Oh, you're wrong. They would have the right to come in. They would have to build a conforming structure, but they would have the right to come in.
Can you build a conforming structure on a nonconforming lot?
Maybe not.
Then they wouldn't be able to come back in.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that's...
All right. We are, we are, we are getting a little, I know where you're going.
I think we're trying to...
I'm asking the question, if I left a burned structure, at what point in time, okay, under this bylaw, do I lose my right to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for permission to rebuild? That's my question. Could somebody answer?
I think I'd like to try and at least address it, whether it's an answer or not. I, I think, I think you're avoiding, and maybe to your advantage or to who the owner of that property might be's advantage.
I can tell you, it's me.
We know that.
But there's no, yeah, I'm not hiding that. It's me.
Really?
Absolutely, and I, I don't, it's any secret.
Yeah, no, no.
All right. We're not going to adjudicate this tonight.
I just want to hear the question answered, that's all.
Well, we don't know if we can...
I think one of the main concerns I have, and the town council shares this with me, is that there is a, there is a taste, if you will, of, of a possible non-taking. And so, that's, you know, that's part of what this change absolutely has to address because at some point, somebody's going to take the town to task, and in the opinion of town council, that may, that may not go well for the town. So, we're trying to, we're trying to deal with that. Again, in a real-life scenario, would I leave this half-destroyed property for fifteen years and then come and rebuild it? I might. I mean, you can conceive of a situation where that might be the course of action, but much more likely if the property retained its value, because as you said, the value is in the land, not in the structure. I would probably sell it to somebody who would redevelop it.
Well, they're going to have the same situation. I mean, if you leave it there long enough, and under this bylaw, you can leave it there indefinitely and come back and ask for permission from the zoning board to rebuild it, the zoning board then tells you what the, what the determination is to be under the special permit. My only comment, with all due respect to this, because I, Bob and I get along great, okay? I forewarned him, and Ian, I'm sure you knew I was going to be here to talk about this. There is no reason why somebody shouldn't be able to remove a burned structure, okay, and help the neighborhood by taking it down right after the fire and when they are ready come back and ask for permission to put that structure back, whether it's one year or ten years. It shouldn't make a difference. And in this situation, in this town, I've been studying this since nineteen ninety...
I know that.
I got one lot that's being left out of this, okay? And if Bob, if you're saying the town council's worried about a taking without compensation, it's a land-taking without compensation. And there's probably only one person that's going to end up filing that case eventually, but I have tried again and again to let the town do away with that time limit. My structure, Steve, because you made a comment, I proposed a structure that met all setbacks. It was approved three times by conservation, okay? Small structure, it's only twenty-two feet by thirty-three feet, okay? What was there was a small structure, probably didn't meet the setback. This one meets all setbacks. It's only being denied because the guy took it down when he was asked to take it down. Now is the time to correct it. There's no Indians coming back, putting TVs back up like they tried in the nineties, okay? Because until nineteen seventy-eight, everybody had a right to come back and rebuild.
The Atlantis nature study structure.
You got it.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on.
So, I would just urge the board to maybe modify this and just say, anybody has a right to go to the zoning board to ask to refit that.
We will take that under advisement.
I, I would tell you that we could address that, but I would not remove the incentive to get it done sooner as opposed to later.
Okay.
And, and, and I just think that by doing it just this way, again, if I had a burned structure, I would leave it there until I was ready to rebuild it. I wouldn't go clean it up because I might lose my right after a few years, and maybe something does happen to it.
I, I, you made that argument. I get, I get you. All I'm saying is I would not remove the incentive to have somebody do it sooner as opposed to later.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and I think this honestly does that. I mean, within the four-year time that we're talking about, you can just go ahead and do it. After that, you're at the mercy, so to speak, of the zoning board of appeals deliberation and conditions that might be placed on the, on the project by the ZBA.
Okay.
And not only that, you're required to do it as a conforming structure.
Okay.
After four years, according to the way you've written.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
No.
No, no, no. It can't be, it can't be more nonconforming than what was there.
It can't be more nonconforming. It doesn't...
No.
That's a good, that's a good point.
With the provision that no nonconforming use, once abandoned or not used...
That's a use.
That's a use, though. That's, that's not a dimensional nonconformity. That's simply a use.
So, you can't have a restaurant or residential area ever, and then after four years come back and say you want to have a restaurant again? That makes sense, but you have the ability to convert it to a single-family dwelling, so there's still use of the land. There's still a viable use of the land because you can make the use conform. But there are lots where...
Right, so you have to build something that conforms.
The use would have to conform under that provision you've probably brought back in.
And you couldn't build a, a structure there, a house there, that doesn't conform per setback either?
Yes, you could. If the zoning board of appeals gave you a special permit and determined that you were not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, but...
So, that is your intent.
You, you are, you are right with an additional caveat. You could build a nonconforming dimensional structure there after four years if it existed previously.
Correct.
So, you couldn't build, you couldn't build a new nonconforming structure if it, it couldn't have a new nonconformity that didn't exist previously, and you need a special permit in order to use it.
So, if you wiped out a nonconfor, if you wiped out a restaurant...
Yes.
Right, which was a nonconforming use, and you built a house, how could you have nonconforming setbacks?
You couldn't. You couldn't.
Why not?
If, you, because it wasn't a house that existed there before.
No, if, if the restaurant, if the building...
That's not the intention of this bylaw.
Let, let me try and get this correct if I can. If the building, the restaurant, was at ten feet for side yard setback and fifteen was required...
No, no, it's a use. It's a use.
If it's a use, you can't rebuild the restaurant. That's what, that's what he's saying, and that makes sense. But you can turn, you can turn the use of the land into residential if it's residentially zoned.
Right, with current zoning law, right? You're not going all the way back to nineteen fifty to rezoning.
You're going back to what existed when the restaurant was there. So, if the restaurant was ten feet from the property line, it was supposed to be fifteen...
It was a restaurant.
It was fifteen.
It was nonconforming.
It was nonconforming, the building.
Use.
Anthony.
Can I make for a second? I'll answer this question, you know, based on how the board interpreted this sort of question for the half-years I've been on it. The board has traditionally not considered a certain use that has a dimensional nonconformity to then be transferable to a different use to have that same nonconformity. If you have a store on a lot that is from a sideline where eight feet is required, the board traditionally has not said, okay, you can knock that down and build a home six feet from that sideline. We have traditionally considered that, and it hasn't happened very often, and I'm not aware of any that have been approved, we have considered that as a different or new nonconformity. Being able to transfer dimensional nonconformities between uses is a little bit too much lily pet jumping, in my opinion. A home that is six feet from a property line where eight is required is different than a business that's six feet from a property where eight is required. I would argue that that's a new nonconformity, not the same.
Well, in fact, the wording of eight, eight, ten point two A and B basically says that the reconstruction, extension, or structural change shall meet all dimensional requirements for front side of rear yard setbacks.
That's for the building inspector to issue the permit, not the zoning board. The building inspector can issue permits on these nonconforming structures if the addition meets the setbacks and things like that.
Well, and if the addition doesn't add more than twenty percent to the gross floor--
Correct. That's the section you're reading, though.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a little bit different. It's when you get to the zoning board of appeals, power is all I'm really getting at. And that's a great section, what Bob was just reading. The building inspector should be able to allow certain additions if they conform, the additions conform up to that twenty percent. And that was added recently, maybe five or six years ago or something like that. So that's a good, maybe eight, I don't know, I'm getting older, but that was added. But this, again, clearly, I think that everybody should have a right to go to the zoning board if they have a home and ask if they can put that home back. That's the only word I'm looking at.
All right, we understand that. Anything else? It's getting late. We're all set. Thank you. Now, thank you. We'll take all of this under advisement, Stephen.
Thanks for putting it up.
Always.
I just think it's time to--
Well, thank you.
And the other bylaws, depending on those, marijuana went a long, long ways, and you guys are doing right there.
Thank you.
Pat, I've given you a ton of time.
Yep, thank you. Like I said, we're working, chipping away at it.
As more people understand the process, they're going to come around and understand what you're doing.
I hope so. Thank you. All right, we now have minutes. Rebecca.
Thank you all.
I move to further meeting minutes for January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and then for thirteen, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Accounting.
I'm pleased to include the requisition of three thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars to Chesapeake itself for pure view services for four eighty-five, I think, or five thousand sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents to John D. McFarkey for return of stolen water bonds, Martinis plus interest and unexpected, unexpected return to the zoning board.
Is there, all in favor? All right. Liaison reports, has anybody been liaisoned?
We are not liaising in correlation.
Nope. It's the end of the month. Okay, then we have the planners' report.
Articles are going along, but I guess I'd like to kind of a little bit recap on tonight by asking to, as the board likes the order in which the articles are presented, because that would be the proposed presentation order for the zoning public hearing.
Yeah, I'm wondering why they're not addressing the moratorium first? Because that would then make the zoning article--
We're not talking, we're talking about marijuana as one big topic. We're not talking, we don't get into article what article.
But I'm just asking a question. Why are we doing that?
Last time it was the other way. I was going, I had the same question. Last time it was general bylaw and zoning.
Do your advice, by the way, if you're doing--
This area is for zoning bylaws. And so--
No, I know this was for the zoning bylaw. I'm just asking, at the town meeting, you said they were going to do the bylaw first and then the moratorium, right? Or the--
I think that's the order town council, town council, I will work it out very carefully so that watch, watch the zoning in place in the eventuality that a moratorium is lifted. And you want the zone--
No, I get it, but I'm just saying, you know, nobody's going to jump in that five-minute window between one and the other, right? So--
I'll type the town council, that's all.
It just feels like for me to debate over--
You don't want a moratorium lifted before you--
Before you have zoning. The lawyer has told, and town council in pro bono has told us now very clearly that you want your zoning in place first.
Yeah, those are two totally different issues. Either whatever happens with the moratorium, you still want the bylaw.
That's right.
So it shouldn't matter which goes first, in my opinion, just get the bylaw in place.
Just get the bylaw passed.
That's the matter, which goes first.
Well, next year, they could come back and--
I think because of the issue, the bigger debate is going to be the one that takes over even the zoning bylaw, right? Which is, should we have it or should we not? I'm just saying, why avoid that? Why not just do it, you know?
But I think we're going to propose it, town meeting, and it'll all be discussed together, and then you vote on the individual--
Individual ones.
And the articles, we haven't gotten to written them yet. I mean, but that's how, that's how I've been talking to the town council about it.
And that's what we're doing, eighteen, is all the discussion, one thing.
I think, yes, yes.
But it was the opposite for it, it was general bylaw and no bylaw.
Wouldn't the zoning bylaw be moot if we--
You wouldn't do it, right?
--didn't pass the moratorium?
No, no, you still want the zoning bylaw.
You don't want the zoning bylaw because in the event that--
Next year.
Next year.
Something happens.
You want to listen again?
Now, we want a zoning bylaw in place so that in the eventuality, anything happens.
Just pandemonium.
No, no.
They're going to discuss the moratorium, I mean, I get it, I get it. You want the bylaw in place. Pandemonium's going to be over the moratorium.
Pandemonium's going to be over the moratorium.
That's right.
But bylaw's totally separate. If you guys need it, you gotta get it.
We've got to give it passed.
That's what I'm saying, is if you start the discussion on the bylaw first, you're going to get into the pandemonium first, no matter what.
Either way, you're going to have--
I'm just trying to project reality here.
So if they decide to lift the moratorium, then putting the bylaw, like, and then proposing the bylaw, people can up and down vote there, and they'll most likely upvote it because it's a bylaw and it's there and they just lifted the moratorium. But if they don't, if the moratorium is lifted and they vote down the bylaw, then is it just--
Then we have a problem. Then we have a huge problem.
You have a problem, you have a trouble.
That's how you get pandemonium.
And you tell you to add the culture use, if that's not them.
When people go to, like, so I understand, like, okay, let's have the bylaw in place just in case they lift the mor-- or just in case the town wants to lift the moratorium. But the general consensus overall, I can just see it happening, is people are going to, we're going to try to say, oh, hey, let's pass this bylaw, but don't worry, we're not lifting the moratorium, because some people are going to hear, they're going to hear the marijuana bylaw, or Canada's bylaw, go into effect, and they're going to think the moratorium is lifted even though the moratorium was only being brought up next.
People, but people will read the warrant. I mean, the people who come to town meeting are pretty astute, so the hundred and something of us that show up all the time, we read the warrants. Well, there were seven hundred the last time, but--
There's a lot of trickery that goes on at town meetings.
But there is, people who go to town meeting are usually pretty well aware of what is on the warrant and how it's going to, how it's going to play out.
Correct, and you'll do just fine.
Yeah, because like I said, it's, although the last time was overwhelmingly seven hundred people because it was, and I'm sure that there will be a lot at this meeting, too, but those people will have, will be usually well-prepared for what's going to happen on the floor. A lot of trickery, like you say, at town meetings, you've got to watch all the corners.
Who, what?
I think Bob's board is, only because this is just going to be crazy.
Right, so you want to put, you want to put the nonconforming users before marijuana? I don't want to give, I want to give marijuana a fair amount of time. It's only fair. So my next question becomes the graphics. How, is the graphics okay that we prepared?
I think it's too long. I think we could consolidate that.
I can offer that.
That's okay, we're good, thank you anyway, but we could, we could work on that.
I think it needs--
Tweaking.
It needs high-level, sort of, sort of setting, right? And sort of the way I think about this is that, okay, if we're going to discuss both of these items, both, you know, lifting the moratorium or not, the only way we would lift the moratorium is if it's within the context of this zoning bylaw, right? So you're sort of saying to people--
You don't know that.
Here's--
No.
You can, you can--
That's what we want. Let me finish, all right? So what we're saying, right, is that we think this is the appropriate bylaw, right, for zoning if the moratorium is lifted, right? And if somebody wants to make a decision about whether they vote for or against the moratorium, they will at least know, right, what, if they vote to lift it, what is coming, right? Because we'll have established the zoning bylaw.
We'll establish the zoning bylaw, correct.
And so I think it's sort of that picture that we probably need to create.
I can add on to that. So do you think that this bylaw is appropriate if they don't lift the moratorium?
Yeah, yes.
I'm neither here nor there on that.
But I, but I do believe--
You need the bylaw.
We need the bylaw.
Even if it's in place and they don't use it and don't lift it, one year, two years, five years, you need the bylaw.
It is legal in the state of Massachusetts.
You've got, you have to get the bylaw.
It's already, it's already, yep, yep.
However you vote on this, it needs to deal with the moratorium.
Just explain it to me. Why do I need the bylaw if we haven't lifted the moratorium?
Because next year, what are you going to do? Are you going to go through this all again and create the bylaw again?
No.
Just put it in place. Just put it in place.
We'll put it in place, and then--
I'm saying that I don't think you're going to get it in place.
Well, that's a whole different story, but as a board, I would--
So we're going to go through it every time we do this.
As a board, you guys want to see this in place. You want to see it in place, you did all this work. You want to see this in place, whether there's a moratorium now and it's lifted in the year, you don't want to come back and do the whole bylaw all over again.
Yeah, I mean, we, I worked so--
If we're using that, if they lift it, there may be a completely different set of circumstances to be lost. We're going to have to redo the whole bylaw.
So you're not answering the question. Graphics, what do you want to see improved on the graphics?
Well, since I, since I did it, I will tell you, it needs to be consolidated, it needs to be more high-level, it needs to be a little more top-down.
The map, people need to see the map.
Yes.
Trying to get the data.
Yeah, which we had discussed, yeah, right.
All right, what about the other, what about the graphics for the, the six, ten?
I think that--
The orange, the orange, the brackets. Brackets, I'm right on the line.
I would use the most egregious.
There.
Yep.
You can't really see it on the screen.
For zoning public hearing?
She's talking, but not. She's not talking about the time. Oh, you're talking about the public hearing. I thought you were talking about time.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the small, small differences. We have a zoning public hearing in two weeks. What do you want to do? That's what I'm talking about.
I think that we should have those pictures to show people. Yes, I agree, that the pictures are useful.
Do you want to highlight, do you want us to highlight the property line?
Yes.
Same presentation as tonight, and you can just--
You can add something that's easy to pick out, right?
Are we going to change it to fifty feet?
I think we should all think about that.
I like fifty feet.
I think we have to think about it.
I think we can think about it, and we'll do some more research in--
Yeah, let's get a little--
From a legal point of view, Rebecca, why don't you like it?
I don't, I'm not a builder, I have no idea, but I don't, person, I don't know. I don't want it to, if you can't, you know, if you have the circle thing, you can't build a house just because you can't get something over here that you need to, I think that's kind of silly. I think, I think we should ask people that actually do that kind of stuff, like, is that reasonable or is that unacceptable?
Well, we did.
Rebecca, we did. We did consultants.
We did. We had consultants.
We did have some consultants. It's a tough issue.
Yes, it is.
And we came up with a very simple format, and this board didn't like it. And so we added the language about the fifty-foot circle, and everyone seemed to think that that works. So I can take this back to our consultants.
Well, I think dimensionally, the question is fifty feet, right, or it's thirty feet, right, or something like that.
Right, we have to make--
I think that's--
I think the number is wrong.
If you have physical access to it, nothing wrong with having a small area off the back of the lot that you got to walk to, but it shouldn't, and I'm going to add this, it shouldn't be two feet, it shouldn't be five feet, okay? It should be probably enough to be able to get a machine in if they need to do a separate system so you don't have to do an easement.
So how big is that?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet?
Twenty feet or twenty-five feet.
Okay, let's split the difference and make it twenty-five.
I can't give you the exact number.
We'll talk about it.
But it would make it so that it's usable.
If we have examples--
It would make it so it's usable area.
What are they--
All right, we'll highlight some stuff. All right, so I think we have some ideas of how we're proceeding. And so the only other thing that I want to say is that next week, I have to go to the advisory board. I'm going to the advisory board for budget and non-monetary articles. So I will be presenting this to the advisory board.
What, the zoning? No.
Yes.
Yes.
But we, but we haven't--
Why are we doing--
We're in a position, that's early.
That's kind of strange.
That's very strange.
This is what I was told that I'm going to be asked to do.
No, that doesn't make--
Can you tell them we want to do it, right?[1656.12]